So, welcome everyone. I'm going to call this meeting of the Monroe County Council to order for Tuesday, September 27th, 2022. And I'd like to note for the record that all members of council are here, present in the Nat U Hill Room in person. So, I am just going to let that stand and we're all present. I'd like to move on to the adoption of the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to change any items, move them, add them, remove them from the agenda? I had a request to rearrange, I believe. So, let me propose that we do that. I believe it's the legal department's items. Sorry, I didn't write down what they, what numbers they were.
It's item 12.
Item 12.
Items 12, B and C would become 12 A and C.
So, we're gonna, we're just gonna rearrange within item 12. So, I'm not sure if that even needs a motion, if we're inside of an item, does it? Okay. All right. So, just before we're warned, we will be rearranging A, B's and C's once we get to item 12. Moving A to the bottom. And then, we will not vote because we didn't really do anything. So, we're moving to department updates, which is item number three. Do we have any departments that wish to make an update at this time? I do not have access to the Zoom list, I'm going to assume, since I'm not hearing anything.
There's no one on Zoom.
Okay. Well, that's lonely. Item number four, council board and commission appointments.
Counsel, I move to approve the recommendation to appoint Juliette Hardesty to the Women's Commission, completing a two-year term that expires on January 1st, 2024.
This is brought to us on behalf of the Women's Commission by Jennifer Crossley.
Yes. So, good evening, everybody. Julie Hardesty is going to be the last vacancy for our council appointment and been working very hard and making sure that our commission is up to speed and having quorum so we would be able to have our meetings. They are very much busy and getting ready with work with the STEM program. And Julie Hardesty is a great candidate. I do believe she might be on Zoom. I think she might want it to, or might have wanted to just say just a couple of remarks, but she's phenomenal and if she is able to speak, I'd love to hear from her.
Can you tell if anyone is on Zoom, if Julie Hardesty is on Zoom?
I see it back there, a little bit.
Oh, there's a list, okay.
You want me to move that over?
Oh, there she is. Okay, we need to unmute.
Hi, hi, can you come in?
Yes.
Hello, hi, thank you so much. I wasn't sure if I needed to be here or not, but thank you very much for letting me stop in and say hello. So, yes, I am, I am very much looking forward to participating in the Monroe County Women's Commission if I'm appointed. So, supporting the, the needs of women and women identifying folks in Monroe County.
Fantastic, thank you. Appreciate your willingness to serve. Yes.
I would just like to congratulate Jennifer Crossley, Councilmember Crossley, on this recruitment. The materials here are fantastic, that this person is a tenured faculty member at Indiana University and sits on numerous committees of the faculty. So, well done, and I think she's going to be a great addition to Monroe County government.
Are there any other comments or questions from council? Okay. Then, all those in favor of approving the appointment of Juliette Hardesty to the Women's Commission, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes with one nay. And that, now we will move to item number five, the Youth Services Bureau.
Counsel, I move to approve the Youth Service Bureau's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 91039623, Project Safe Place Grant, in the amount of $8,000 in the services category.
We have Mr. Malone here to talk to us, welcome.
Fantastic, thank you. So, we have received an opportunity to get, be a part of a pilot project through the Indiana Youth Services Association. This is a supplementary funds to our Safe Place dollars. So, basically what DCS, Power Child Services is doing is wants to do a study on the efficacy of Safe Place as a prevention kind of program to see if we are actually diverting kids from DCS. But because it's going to be more money for each Safe Place program, they're offering us a little bit more money in advance. So, that's what, that's what that $8,000 is for, because we don't need that for personnel, we're asking for that to be placed in outreach funds. And so, that's the purpose of the appropriation.
Sounds great. Are there any questions or comments from council members? Yes.
In the materials that you wrote, you talked about the hope that this will secure funding for, for the long term. Have, have they, have there been materials given to you that suggest that long-term funding is on the way, or is, is this something that we're maybe negotiating for?
We're in negotiations. I think this is, they have been, DCS has been working with Indiana Youth Services Association closely and has been routinely giving funds for a variety of projects that then get dispersed out to Youth Services bureaus. This is what I would say, they are hopeful that the findings will come from this. I don't know if the funding's on the way, but if the, if everything looks good, then they will be appropriate, hoping to go to the legislature to have more money put forward for the Youth Service bureaus in the future, specifically for Safe Place programming.
And then, will the findings of this study be publicly available?
Not, I am not aware of that. I would, I would, I can't say either way, but I will check.
Okay, that'd be, that'd be great, if, you know, if we could see even the subset of the data, that'd be interesting.
Absolutely.
I just want to say thank you so much for working with the youth all of this time. We really, really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Good mission. But also, the fact that we've had the Safe Place Grant here in Monroe County for many, many years. And so, maybe if others can see the success here, there will be more dollars available for the other. There's very few like ours in the state. I think we're the best, of course.
We are, we have been a national model, actually, where, where other national Safe Place would reach out to our Safe Place Coordinator to coordinate how Safe Place should look in other states and other things like that in the last few years. So, we do have a very good Safe Place program. There are also very other good Safe Place programs in the state. I don't want to denigrate my colleagues, but we're pretty good, we're pretty.
Counsel Munson.
I just wanted to say congratulations to YSB, because DCS chose you for this pilot project, this research project that's going to help inform Safe Place around the country, as well as here. And it just shows the value of our program and our staff, so thank you much. And you will notice Mr. Malone's cutters jacket on. He says he's prepping to leave us, but once again, we say thank you for, for your work in Monroe County government.
Thank you so much, yes.
Any other questions or comments? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, then may I have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
We move to item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the Youth Service Bureau's request to amend the 2022 Salary Ordinance in Fund 9111-0001503 YSB Grant by changing the maximum part-time hourly range rate from $23 to $40 hourly.
Did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, brief, a little bit awkward, but a brief, brief. We have a couple of people who are leaving, but they are willing to stay on part-time to help with transition, but are currently hourly, the salary ordinance does not allow them to have their previous hourly rate when they were full-time. And so, Vicky was hoping that we could have that extended to, so that everybody could get their normal hourly rate in their part-time capacity during this sort of transitory phase.
And I assume that the part-time line will have enough funding for the new?
These are grant funds.
Grant.
And so, so there are, there are, there are plenty of grant dollars in the part-time line for us.
All right. Are there any questions? Yes.
I'm glad we have some way to make sure that compensation is made, but I'm wondering if we should make this sort of temporary, because I don't think this is going to be long-term. I mean, we can go back and readdress it, you know, next year if we need to.
This is not planning on to be a long-term thing, but for the salary ordinance to allow to pay for that, within if other management or whomever leaves and there's a period of time where there's a gap and that they'd like to keep someone on part-time, it'll allow them to keep that hourly rate. But there's not an intention that this would be a long-term, part-time position for anybody at this time.
Other thoughts from council?
Ms. Shell? I just want to say that this rate that we're looking at will not be part of the 2023 budget. They've asked for a different rate, so if they need it for 2023, they'll have to come back and ask for it. But for now, we're not planning on that being for 2020, or yeah, 2023 budget.
Well, that sounds like it makes it temporary, doesn't it? Okay. And we probably see, see you back that, because it's not very long, that's not very far from now.
It isn't, no.
Okay, okay. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, is there any public comment on this item? In that case, could I have a roll call vote on this item as well?
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then, we move to item six with our solid waste management district.
Counsel, I move to approve the Monroe County Solid Waste Management District's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 82830000, debt service in the amount of $400 in the account line 43835, agency fee.
Welcome, Mr. McGlasson. And I think we talked about this once.
Well, I may have mentioned at our budget review that I would be coming tonight for this. And first off, I do need, I need to make a correction to what was submitted in the agenda request. I believe that request indicated that the amount adopted by the council included this agency fee. That actually was not correct, and doing some, some additional research on this. And I, first, I apologize, I'm going to explain all this, and this ultimately all comes back on the district. It's ultimately our review and our responsibility, but the budget amount approved by our board did include the fee amount. The budget amount submitted to the council did improve, did include that fee amount. However, the ordinance adopted by the council did not. And it, the Form 3 and Gateway includes it, the Form 4 and Gateway includes it, the 4B does not. So, I honestly, I have, it's unfortunately been so long, and I apologize, I have no idea what happened, but again, ultimately, that does come back on the district, lack of oversight on our part, and we should have caught all that during the process. But, but be that as may, it is a, an annual fee we pay to the agency that does manage the debt service for us and our reporting and disclosure requirements. And it is something we are obligated to pay. And just crunching some numbers this afternoon, that fund currently has a balance of $31,326 in it. We have December revenue due $127,500 and change. So, we expect to have an end-of-year balance of almost $159,000 in that fund. The next payment is due on February 1st in the amount of $153,585. So, the, the funds are there to absorb this appropriation and cover that agency fee this year.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from council on this item? Seems good, okay. Any public comment? Seeing none, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now, we're on to item seven from the Coroner's Office.
Counsel, I move to approve the Coroner's request for additional appropriations in Fund 1000-0007, General Fund Coroner, in the amount of $21,065 in the personnel category.
And do we have someone from the Coroner's Office on Zoom?
I don't see anyone, but I, I know what the request is about, if you'd like for me to?
Okay.
Take care of it. If you'll recall, the council approved the elected officials appropriations at one amount, and then, near the end of December of 2021, you changed the elected officials, and this also included her clerk deputies in December on the salary ordinance. So, this is just to make up that difference within her budget. And she does not have a lot of wiggle room or any additional that she can like do in-house transfers with. So, she needs this to complete her budget for the remainder of this year.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions for Ms. Shell on this item?
This is just the housekeeping.
Right, okay. Fantastic. And are there any public comments on this item? Okay, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Great, thank you. And now, we're on to item eight from our Sheriff's Office.
Counsel, I move to approve the Sheriff's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 1000-0005, General Fund Sheriff, in the amount of $100,000 in the supplies category.
Welcome, Sheriff Swain.
Thank you. Some years ago, we had significant saving when fuel prices dropped and we were able to fund our body-worn cameras with the savings, but today, we're running just about out of fuel funds with no other available source, given the time of year. And my financial manager says that we need about $100,000 to get through the rest of the year.
Okay. Need some gas money. You need gas money, all right. Are there any questions or comments on this item?
Done this for other departments, and this just makes sense.
Yeah, they have a lot of vehicles.
I would just like to comment, but I would hope that it would stay in that line and not be transferred, even if you have, there unless we know about it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, could we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, sure. And now, we have our Health Department, item nine.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for a category transfer in Fund 8130000, Nacho of $1,000 from the supplies category to the services category.
And we have Ms. Kelly, our Health Administrator, welcome.
Hello, welcome. Thank you. I do apologize, could you repeat which one we're starting with?
It's the 1,000.
Okay. This request is just for a category transfer, this is to pay the quarterly fees for the Baby &amp; Me Tobacco-Free Program. This is an online portal system that the department utilizes. This is supplemental funding, and the plan is to cover two quarterly fees with this request while we look for alternative funding methods.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from council? All right, any public comment? I think we can do a voice vote on this one, so all those in favor of approving the Health Department's category transfer in Fund 8130, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes, and now we have item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request to create new account lines as presented on the agenda in Fund 81159623, Lead Case Management, and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations of $1,162.10 in the supplies category, and $48,588.95 in the services category, for a total appropriation of $49,751.05.
Second, although I think just to correct, I think that's Lead Case Management.
What did I say? Pardon me. Lead Case Management.
Yes, so this request is to create a new fund line and appropriation, this is our Lead Case Management. This is new funding that we have received. This is a collaboration between our public health clinic nursing staff and our general environmental staff.
Great. Are there any comments? Yes.
So, recently, the Inflation Induction Act, or, or it's the Inflation Act, it's one of the two, had provisions in there to address some of the infrastructure failings across the United States that led to some of these old buried pipes that had lead in them, and for, to, to help with, with that. Do you know, have you heard anything about some of those federal dollars coming into Monroe County to tackle some of the issues that you talked about here?
I do not know anything of that specifically, at least as of yet, but I do know that with this program, at least, the general environmental staff are responsible for going out on-site, collecting the samples and sending that in for testing, and then, the nursing staff follows up with that clinical care as wedge, as well as education. So, we are planning to do education, which includes coloring books for children, educational brochures that we can pass out through the community to help bring awareness to this.
And, and the number of children is 24 annually, is that correct?
Yes, so that's the projected amount that's going to be, of cases that would be covered with this, from my understanding. That's pretty generous, what is allotted for that, which is why we have decided to use, utilize some of these funds for some of those educational purposes and additional services that may come up through the course of this program.
Yes, as a member of the real estate community for many, many years, we know that how important it is to remind folks about paint, lead-based paint, and the problems that that can cause with children. Children love to chew on those, you know, the baby beds, and while those baby beds may be really neat to have, a really old one, need to make sure that it's not, does not have that opportunity for that baby to get in touch with that lead-based paint. So, this is really important, and so many young parents are not aware of that. So, we in the real estate industry try to make sure that we share that knowledge, so I appreciate it.
Great, thank you. Other comments or questions from council? Any public comment on this item? And, okay, so could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous. Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
There was a, a comment from a David Brunworth, he had his hand up for the Baby &amp; Me Tobacco.
Okay.
But we didn't notice it.
I'm happy to have a comment now for that.
That's what I was wondering, if you wanted to do it now, or if you wanted to do it
That's fine, this is a good point. If I could be promoted on Zoom, then I can be better able to see the comments. Thank you.
Does Dave Brunworth want to make a comment this time?
Give us two seconds, takes a while.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thanks.
Okay. Thank you. I just raised a question about the Baby &amp; Me Program, are there any outcomes that are reportable for that program?
Do you hear the question?
Any outcomes reportable? I do not have specific figures on that, but I do know that some of the key outcomes, again, are reducing that maternal smoking and some of those associated risks. I would be happy to gather some specific data on that.
Yeah, I think it'd be wise to report that data to justify the additional expense.
Sure thing, okay.
Okay, thank you.
So, if, if somebody wanted to contact the council office, or contact the Health Department directly, you should be able to get that, but if you could share that with the council office, then we'll be prepared to share any information as well.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Um, so we are at item C, I believe.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request to create new account lines as presented on the agenda in Fund 81269623, Title 10 Grant Fund, and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations of $121,594 in the personnel category, $27,000 in the supplies category, and $23,328 in the services category, for a total appropriation of
Did you want to add anything on this topic?
On the Title 10?
Yeah.
So, this is a department, we are hoping to hear of this grant agreement soon. We are still awaiting the funding, this is, these are figures that are calculated off of our projected figures from last year. And this is what funds our futures family planning clinic.
Okay. Are there questions from council? Yes.
When are you expecting to hear from the state of Indiana? When are you expecting to hear from the state of Indiana about funding for our clinic?
Yes, so I'm supposed to have accurate figures by mid-October. I did have a meeting today and said that I could feel pretty confident about receiving the similar level of funding that was received last year, but I should have accurate figures on that mid-October. Moving forward, got started on working on the telehealth program, which I think is going to be a really great benefit for the clinic moving forward as well.
Excellent. I'm really glad to hear that you had that conversation.
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes, I'm looking at this, I'm reminded that a few days ago, we saw notice that you needed, you had an opening there that you needed to fill, and I just wanted to ask if you have been able to find the right person for that.
No, we have just started that search currently. So the plans that are in place is I have scheduled time the second week of October to go down and get some intensive one-on-one training on the insurance and the billing to help keep those operations up. In addition, the LPN is undergoing some training as well to help the clinic keep moving along. I am actively receiving applications and hoping to be able to move forward with presenting an offer here shortly.
That's great. You know, so many times people have been saying, well, we need to assess departments by recommending people. And I just wanted to make sure that in every way we can, in what we're publicly speaking, if we know we have a vacancy, we need to mention it to help those department heads. So that's.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for that.
And I did see, I think it's probably a typo on that third sentence that said provided at of charge. I think that's supposed to say provided at no charge, but that wouldn't be a problem for you, so.
Yeah, that was a typo, and I fixed it.
Okay.
It's correct.
Any other questions or comments from counsel? Public comments on this item? I keep looking back there because I've gotten the habit. Now, okay. So could we please have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. And now we'll move to item D.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request to create, pardon me, new account lines as presented on the agenda in Fund 8150-9622, TANF Grant Fund, and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations of $35,178 in the Personnel category, $7,439 in the Supplies category, and $4,383 in the Services category, for a total appropriation of $47,000.
Second.
Do you have some words for us on this one?
Yes, just a few. So we are seeking to appropriate additional funds into the Temporary Assistance for Needy Families. This is revenue already received and expected. This funding does help to support the clinic staff for the Futures Family Planning Clinic. During the call that I had earlier today, I was notified that we are going to be getting an additional allocation of funds for $12,000. That is for this cycle, so that will help to cover the costs of the expenses through September 30th, 2022, while we wait on those final figures for the Title X funding.
Great. Got a lot of balls in the air, not going.
Many conversations this week, but many positive outcomes, at least thus far, is what I've seen, so.
Are there, yes, Peter Iverson?
I just want to make sure that I'm reading this correct, that the long-acting reversible contraceptives, also known as LARCs, are in kind, provided by the Indiana Family Health Council. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. That comes as no charge to us, and okay, that's wonderful.
Any other questions, comments from council members? Okay, great. Public comment on this item? Seeing none, then may I have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
That concludes the Health Department items, right? I believe. Yes. Yes, cool. Okay. Thank you. And now we'll move to item 10 with the Probation Department.
I'm seeing 10B, but not a 10A.
Oh. They're being read together.
Ah, gotcha. Awesome. Counsel, I am combining items 10A and B into one motion. I move to approve the Health Department's request for a new account line as presented on the agenda in Fund 81.
Oh, that's my bad.
All right. Combining items 10A and B into one motion for the probation department's request for new account lines as presented on the agenda in Fund 8160, Justice Partner SIM, and to simultaneously approve a category transfer of $1,000 from the Services category to the Capital category.
Second.
Welcome, Ms. Brady.
Thank you. I'm Linda Brady, the Chief Probation Officer. This grant that I'm before you to talk about transferring some money dates back a few years. In 2018, there was a statewide opioid summit. And as a follow-up to the opioid summit, the Indiana Office of Court Services hosted regional trainings on the sequential intercept model, or otherwise known as SIM, which we've heard a lot about from our consultant's report. In 2019, Monroe County actually sent a team of criminal justice leaders and mental health professionals to a SIM training. It was a regional training hosted by the Indiana Office of Court Services. So we had quite a few people who went as part of our team. And our team identified that reentry services was something that we could do something immediately about, because we were told at that training that we would be getting a grant of about $60,000. So $60,000, it's not a little, and it's not a lot. So it's just kind of in the middle. And we also didn't know if we were going to be getting it any years after that. So we thought reentry is something we can do something about to work with the program that was already started in the jail. So by attending the SIM training, we were eligible for what was called the Justice Partners Addictions Response Grant that was to implement system improvements, and that was paid to a court from the Indiana Office of Court Services. And so we applied for reentry services, and what we did with that was we entered into an MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, excuse me, otherwise known as a contract, with Centerstone, our local community mental health center, to hire a recovery coach to work within our jail with the then New Beginnings Program. So since October of 2019, we have received the maximum every year of $60,000 for that grant, for a total of $180,000. But due to COVID, things didn't happen the way we planned. We had turnover. We weren't able to operate the program the way we wanted to, so we had leftover money. We were allowed by the state to amend our grant budget so as not to lose that money and have to give it back to the feds, because nobody wants to do that. That's no, not even the federal government wants that money back. They want us to spend it on the intended purposes. So we made a request to our granting body to use the money to fund some training and also to purchase an owl to help us with, do some in-person/virtual services with clients. We're doing our Prime for Life class that our probation officers teach with our students who are referred by the prosecutor's office primarily, but also our own office for who needs substance abuse, intensive substance abuse education. And so a few other things that we've gotten approval to be able to use the grant money for. So this has already been approved by the Indiana Office of Court Services. So this request would not affect in any way the reentry program that's happening right now with our jail and with our partnership with Centerstone. So this is just to be able to use the money and not lose it from past grant years, and that is it. Any questions?
Questions or comments from counsel?
Yes, is this working only with reentry with the folks in our jail?
Yes.
And the reason I asked that the other day, of course, you have to believe everything you see on Facebook, because it's possible, right? But there was a problem, and somebody said, well, Owen County was using our probation officers for their program? Or what? I mean, I didn't understand that. Do you have an interlocal agreement?
No, we do not. I can't imagine what that is referring to.
I would have loved to have responded to the person who mentioned that, but I thought, well, sure as the world, I say, no, that doesn't happen.
That doesn't make any sense. The only thing I could think of, if there's someone who's in our jail, who is from Owen County, but they're on a Monroe County charge, that could be, but I can't think of any other reason why that would be.
Yeah, I didn't think it was correct, but once again, if I don't know for certain, I didn't want to get off Facebook.
For persons that are in our jail, which who could be Owen County residents.
Or they could be from Timbuktu.
Yeah, right. That's true. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments, counsel?
Just also, I should add that we are in the process of writing and have already submitted the grant for this coming year. It's on a federal year, starts October 1st, and we haven't heard anything yet, but that's not unusual for federal grants, so.
That's great. Yes, go ahead.
Whether it would be with this particular grant, I'm not really seeing decisions on it. But the additional if it should go through, we're not through deciding what's going to happen with budgets or so forth. But are you watching for ways that we can charge back those dollars to these grants having to do with personnel expenses?
Okay, this grant doesn't have any personnel expenses.
I know that, but I said that. I recognize that, and since you're here, I'm going to ask you the question. Or just for you to be watching out for that, because you have expenses now for personnel we wouldn't have had before, like with longevity. And also if we should do that $2,000 one time. So I'm just suggesting you just look at, and I'm not sure what the council will do. I'm just, because you were here, I wanted to discuss.
To, you mean to look at other grant opportunities?
Wherever you are in your different funding sources, and I know you've got them all over the place, where you could find ways to cover those expenses.
Oh, absolutely. We always try to anticipate whenever we write the grants. We never know what was going to happen when we're submitting grants many months before we know what the final budgets are going to be. So we're always looking for those opportunities. Yes. You're welcome.
Other comments or questions? All right, all those in favor of approving the Probation Department's request for new account lines and a category transfer in Fund 8160, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're now at item 11 with our Public Defender's Office.
Counsel, I move to approve the Public Defender's request for a midpoint higher the investigator position in Fund 100271, General Fund Public Defender, and to simultaneously amend the 2022 Salary Ordinances Account Line 10065, Investigator 40 Hours, Sit, Pull, Dee, Non-Exempt, to midpoint higher status with an effective date of October 3rd, 2022.
Second.
Welcome, Mr. Higginson.
Good evening. I'm chairperson, members of the council. I'm Michael Hunt. This is Heather Stuffer from the Public Defender's Office. What we are asking is, we're trying to fill an investigator's position, and the person that we believe we've selected, and it may be reflected in our request, but we think he will be a good addition. He has a BS in theory and practice of criminal justice, so he has some theory, practice there. He has four years of practical experience working as an investigator in the Bronx, New York, Public Defender's Office, the last few years in the homicide division. And as part of that, he was on several trial teams, so that he knows how to work with investigators and attorneys in presenting cases. He also has some technology experience. He worked for several years at an Apple store. So he is familiar with various devices, which is a big help, because anymore, a lot of our investigation, our clients will say, oh, I have it all on my phone here, and you just look at it. Well, we have to take it off the phone and know how to preserve that, and they have different phones. And so the experience with that helps. One of the big pluses, I believe, is he's fluent in Spanish. And we only have one attorney at the current time who is fairly fluent in Spanish. So that'll help a lot with our Spanish-speaking clients. So what we're asking is that he be hired, we'll be allowed to hire him at the midpoint. That's it. If you have any questions?
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments, Ms. Hawke?
Yes, when I reviewed the resume, I was very impressed. And I don't always think it's a good idea to hire at midpoint. We sort of have gotten away from the beginning salary. But it certainly seems if we're going to do that, it's appropriate with this particular hire. So congratulations, and I hope that this person will like Monroe County and stick around a while.
Well, that was one of the questions I asked him when we talked to him, because he's been in New York a while. It turns out that his wife, or his wife's family, is from Columbus, Indiana. And so I asked him if, what the difference, what he thought the difference was, and he said, well, in New York, when you look out, you see buildings, and in Indiana, you see corn. So he's been here, and I hope he enjoys it here, but he's in the process of looking for a house already. And I think from what we found out, that his in-laws are planning on moving from Columbus to Bloomington. So I think they're finding out and settling down.
I hope the process of looking for a house in Bloomington doesn't scare them. Marty can maybe hook him up with some.
He's coming from New York.
Yeah. He seemed to say that would be okay, so.
So I guess my, and I don't want to say, need to go down this rabbit hole, but right now, but I just want to put the marker out here, that we may want to consider a modification to the midpoint hire policy that allows us to delegate that decision to staff, you know, to the HR department when it's clear, when it's clear-cut. Like, I mean, in this case, you're hiring him as an investigator for a public defender's office. The guy's got three and a half years of experience as an investigator for a public defender's office. That's pretty clear-cut, and you know, I could see us making a modification where staff could make that decision when it's, HR can make that decision when it's clear-cut and refer it to the council if it's a border case, or if there's more ambiguity about it. It's just a thought. I know other counties and cities do it that way. They delegate such a decision to staff, so it's not unheard of, or inherently, you know, inherently elected official responsibility.
We'll start with Ms. Munson.
So actually, I was thinking.
So actually, I was thinking something along the same lines. I was wondering where the report from our HR department was in your paragraph. And I just think we should be relying on that office to inform us more. So.
And I don't think we run this by.
The report is included in, it was included in the packet.
It's in the packet.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it was referred forward with positive.
Right.
Mr. Decker.
I was just going to kind of add to that. I've kind of had that sentiment for a while myself, what Counselor McKim is saying. I think some of these things are clear cut. And when I was looking through the packet earlier today, this really struck out, stuck out to me as the type of person we would want to attract to this community. And that we have, I think, some unique situations that allow us to do that here. So we, this is what we want. Now that buying that house, I don't want that to, I wish there was a midpoint house thing that we were dealing with. But this is definitely the kind of expertise you want to bring in to a department that we're very well invested in, in the community.
Well, and I would, in that regard, I would say that in hiring investigators for our office, we get, we get everything from someone who's just graduated from high school, who says, I can be an investigator too. Someone who's been in the special forces and says, I can kill somebody at 800 yards, you know. And so that's not really what we're looking for. And so to get someone with some experience of talking to people, looking at phones and working with the attorneys as a team to present the case, it's, it's it's really unusual. And I'm happy that we found.
So I would, I would think that bilingual abilities of this particular candidate is really important.
While I understand it might work better for the department heads and maybe organization in general, not to bring it before the council. I think just us having the opportunity to have this discussion with you and for the public to see that you've worked really hard to get the right person, there's some merit to that as well. So I appreciate this.
I will let the council fight that one.
Yeah, yes. Any other questions or comments? Okay, let me make sure I'm on the right thing. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now we have item 12 from our legal department and we'll be doing 12B first.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and establish this is the first reading of ordinance 202236, ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds and ordinance 202237, an appropriation ordinance with the general obligation bond for projects which include courthouse improvements, including but not limited to staircase repairs and improvements to bench monument areas, community corrections improvements, including but not limited to fire escape landing and stairs, curry building improvements, including but not limited to east exterior wall repair and storm window installation, justice building improvements, including but not limited to jail lock upgrades and jail door repairs, parking garage improvements, including but not limited to foundation flashing, showers building improvements, including but not limited to parking lot repair, sidewalk repair and west wall window repair, general furniture and technology needs, park improvements, including but not limited to restroom flatwoods, IDNR grant match, land acquisition for future greenway route, greenway development, including construction and amenities, highway improvements, including but not limited to Liberty Drive Trail Extension Construction, Highway Department improvements, including but not limited to acquiring four tandem dump trucks and two brine spray anti-icing units, and all related improvements in the incidental expenses in connections with these projects.
Second.
Welcome, Mr. Cockrell.
Well, thank you. That's generally part of my presentation is reading that list. And I'm glad that I do not have to do that tonight. This is fairly routine in that we do a general obligation or we have done a general obligation bond like this every year for a while. And so typically what the council is most interested in the projects, councilperson Deckard just read those off. Commissioner Administrator Angie Purdy is on, I believe via Zoom, with a presentation to go through those projects. I guess I would just say that we've, that the amount of the bond requested in the package is 3.1 million. That would include all the transaction costs associated with that. Just as a reminder, I think, I don't know, there's an escalator in the, in the law. But the last time I checked, we were, the possibility to do over $5.1 million worth of bonding and still maintain the same level of process. Once you get above that number, you have to go through a different process, which includes remonstrations, things like that. So that, that number is still well below that, that limit. If you have any questions about the documents themselves, I'm more than happy to answer them. I think you're all familiar with, with the document. So I don't want to.
I'm sorry, can you just remind me of what our, what this year's total bond amount was?
I believe it was 3.1 million.
Okay. So yeah, we're basically asking about the same as last year.
Yes.
Other questions for Mr. Cockrell from counsel? I think that I'd like to see the presentation.
Would you like me to go ahead and start that presentation?
You're able to share your screen now?
Yeah. Can you see this?
Yes.
Let's see if I can make you guys smaller. Okay, so this is the 2022 general obligation bond proposal. And the commissioners just wanted to present this following information on projects for you to consider. And we're here because we need obviously your input and your recommendations. And we are pursuing the $3.1 billion bonds as referenced by Mr. Cockrell. So the projects that we had before us came from primarily the Highway Department, Emergency Management, Parks Department, TSD, and the Board of Commissioners. I will tell you that initially this was, this is actually a scare scaled down amount. We started off well over $5 million. So we've managed to peel it back to 4 million. And as we go through this presentation, you will see that I've managed to offer to you a way to meet the 3.1 million limit. For the Highway Department, they are requesting four tandem dump trucks and at a total cost of about $880,000. They're also looking at two additional brine spray anti-icing units. And so what I'd like to do is show you a couple of pictures so that you know what we're looking at. This is a dump truck. And this is one of our current dump trucks, which is quite, quite smashing looking actually. And then this is the de-icing spray unit that they are requesting. And they're requesting two of those. We also talked with, spoke with Jamie Nebel, our new emergency management director. And she shared that we have, Monroe County has 39 sirens who, that are aged and are in need of replacement and/or repair. And so what is being proposed, and I'm going to lay the groundwork because not everybody is necessarily going to think this way. But after speaking with people who are more knowledgeable than I regarding the sirens, what we prefer to do is to conduct countywide assessment of the areas in need and replace or retire sirens based upon that need and the efficacy of getting the the sound out over a period of years. So what we're looking at is there's 39 sirens currently that need to be replaced. They're about $42,244.31 per siren. I on my own, Ms. Nebel did not make any specific requests. She did indicate that she did not want to do it all at one time because she didn't want to be in this position in, you know, years down the road. So presuming total replacement of all 39 sirens over a period of five years, the amount proposed is replacing about seven of those per year at the $329,505 price tag. And then this is kind of where I'm going to lay in the groundwork in that the purpose of outdoor warning sirens, and I'm going to say that use the term before, and I mean before, before we have cell phones, before everybody was hooked up to the internet. Outdoor warning sirens were and are probably one of the most effective ways to inform the public of dangerous weather conditions and other emergencies. Now, however, due to the capabilities of cell phones and other technology, that first statement, we need to add in in areas where people are active without self-service and for people who do not have a cell phone. As our technology continues to advance and as we get more community members on our Everbridge it actually will notify a landline. The placement of our warning sirens is going to become more important than necessarily the number of sirens. And what I'd like to say is it's important that we prioritize those sections of our county that have poor cell service. One prime example I can give you guys is our fairgrounds. There's hardly any cell service available out there. And then another one is Steinsvillers. I was there this past weekend and was totally without the ability to use my, my phone. So prioritizing the placements of our sirens should be what drives us and not just replacing and adding to what we currently have. If we need more based on placement, then most certainly that would be what I think that you guys would want to do and everybody else would want us to do. So I just recommending kind of planting that seed. You guys start thinking about more of placements and not so much as numbers. We're just throwing that out there to you. And there's a picture of what I found to be a siren. I don't know if that's what ours looks like. That's I've been for you. And then Parks Department, they had proposed improvements, some money that we go to improving and expanding the Monroe County Greenway system. And it's, it's only $220,000 to acquire land for future greenways, routes, greenway development, construction, lot of options right there for just $220,000. They also are more, most interested in the Flatwoods Park Improvement. And that would be to install a modern prefabricated restroom with increased user capacity, running water and flushing toilets. These apparently are prefab-fabricated engineered buildings with stainless steel fixtures. And they're looking at two of those units and a women's and men's side for a total of $280,000. And they are currently, I mean, they're always in need of mowers and equipment. They do a lot of mowing and their mowers get, because I have like, seriously, do you guys really need all this? And they put a lot of hours on, on these machines. So they are in in need of some additional equipment. And then our technical services department, we are seeking the $500,000 for backup storage solution. Our current setup is outdated, unsupported. We have issues with it failing. And the beam software we're looking at is the backup and disaster, this was ransom attacks, recovery software that integrates with the backup data storage. And we're just waiting to hear back from Soft Choice and obviously you guys for the final quote on upgrading all of the file storage, but it is anticipated it would be at the $500,000, if not possibly a little bit more. Then the commissioners had a number of projects and these are based on our buildings. So we have our historic courthouse and the exterior staircase on the four corners are in need of some repair. Community corrections, it was mentioned earlier, it's actually the fire escape and the stairs. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but it needs to be corrected. Showers, parking and sidewalk repair, we've been looking at that since we've obtained that parking lot. Because when the county first bought that section of the showers building, we didn't have the parking lot. And I think a few years ago, we purchased the parking lot and it's in need of, it's in need of repair, drainage. On the sidewalks not level. So there's quite a bit of work that needs to be done there. Showers, the west wall window repair. That, these are historic windows and we need to actually put something in between the window and the wall because right now water is coming in. Curry building is the east exterior wall repair we, for that. And that's the so I don't have any, I don't, can't explain that one to you specifically as what was the problem for that? I was thinking it was the atrium, but that's not east. Anyway. Curry building was to look at the storm window installation. And obviously the justice building and jail locks and doors. And the parking garage, we need to do some foundation flashing. And then we have a number of departments who, who just need some basic care for chairs, a table, things of that nature as we go along. And so just so you know, the, the initially when this was all submitted, the justice building was submitted with over a million dollars in proposed corrections and repairs. Well, what I did, because obviously if you've been keeping track of the numbers, we are, we are over the $3.1 million. So I went through and prioritized the, the repairs that were proposed by the commissioner's office. And those are the exterior stairs at the historic courthouse, the fire escape, excuse me, at community corrections, the showers, parking and sidewalk repair. The showers, west wall window repair, again, it's a historic building, more water damage, more problems we have as we go along. I did include some money in here for the justice building, but as everybody is aware, we're looking at obviously a new jail facility. And so we need to be cautious and consider of the funds that we are currently expending for that particular building. And then that, I went ahead and prioritized the miscellaneous department furniture needs because it's, it's hard for departments to to call us and say, hey, I really need a chair. And then we have to go and look for that particular capital purchase line that's available. And we don't have just furniture lines in say, a cumulative capital fund. So I reduced it to the $980,000. Now, what I want to say is that what I did was on here, you will see that the Highway Department is, is funded at the full amount they requested. The emergency management is funded for the first seven approximately sirens. Parks Department in communications with Kelly and hearing how she was wanting to prioritize the projects, we actually removed the support for greenways. And the reason for that, that I would give to you is that that was very little money in the whole scheme of things that was going to be prioritized or going to be potentially used for, it had a lot of projects that have, that would cost much more than the $220,000, I think is what it was at the time. So we took that out for this time. And Kelly's fully aware of that and she was okay. Technical services, that's the backup. Talked with them and although. We really believe that this is a priority and we need to not reduce that amount because we don't anticipate it actually becoming, coming in under the five hundred thousand dollars. And then as I noted before, the commissioners reduced the. All the, the buildings that we were looking at, reduced the funding for the justice building, removed the funding for the curry building. And I want you to know that found alternate funding for the parking garage because. We certainly don't want to not conduct routine repair and upkeep. Because we don't have, want to have a situation like this that we had with their parking garage. So we want to take care of our parking garage. And so it was, it's not that we are not taking care of it. I just found an alternate source of funding for that particular project. And so here we are, I'm just going to kind of give you some. Background as to how we get to this point. And that was, as I said before, we originally had proposed projects exceeding five million dollars. The projects until I had made the, the final proposal to you was in excess of four million. The Liberty Trail, the Liberty Trail extension was on this request from the highway department. Which was like one point three million dollars. However, letting has been moved. So we're hoping that we can move that to the twenty twenty three bond. That's why we're able to take that one off. Park to Parks Highway, everybody was good with the final proposal here. Let's see here, buildings, projects. We're looking primarily at public and employee safety when I was looking at the projects. And then also taking into consideration that we are trying to move forward with a new facility. And so. It's not that we don't want to prioritize needs within the justice building, but. I do think we can triage and prioritize that way. See here. I think that's pretty much it. So now I'm just kind of hoping that you all will like, let me see if I can go backwards. So the final. Screen. Is this one? And. That, those are the projects. We don't have anything. Fancy or pretty or particularly. Eye catching, but we're certainly looking at taking care of our buildings and our community with the, with the sirens. So that's it. If you have any questions, hopefully I can answer them for you.
Right. I guess I will start to my right with any questions or comments, Ms. Iverson.
Yeah, I have two questions and I don't know how to address, but the first question is on the jail locks and doors. I certainly hear the argument that we are going to be potentially building a new building. But I wanted to know the status of the jail locks. I know that Commander Crowe has been in here talking to us about how he's. Nervous about the locks not locking and that certainly should. I just didn't know the status of, of those. And I wanted to make sure that we had that taken care of before we cross that off the list here.
I'll jump in on this and just say that, you know, that's. That's a security question. Which. I, I think that's not discussed publicly, but I think that what I would like to say is that. The safety of our inmates and our jailers, correctional officers is always first and foremost. And so we did not, we took that into consideration. When we were looking at the reduction of that number. That said, reducing the, the justice building amount. It is possible that something is going to happen and, and I will be back to talk to you guys at some point. But at this point in time, we have attempted to manage this in the best manner that we think we can.
Okay. Let, let me go in a second direction and then I'll let my colleagues follow up on that one as their thoughts percolate. I think Michelle and I had the same thought at the same time that the parks request may have been in our budget hearings with the parks department. So I, I didn't know if we were all, we were putting in what's in the bond in addition to what the parks is requesting in their budget.
We, we cut out nineteen, nineteen thousand dollar request for the mowers out of the general fund. And told them to come out of, to come back for a, an additional appropriation. It appears to me that this three hundred ten thousand includes thirty thousand in equipment and then two hundred eighty thousand for the restroom. Which Kelly said was their top priority, getting the restroom for Flatwoods. So this does appear to include thirty thousand dollars in just equipment that I think we've already told the parks that. They could come back to council yet this year because she already had a line on a mower, I think.
Right, right.
Might as well get that taken care of. So yeah, I think thirty thousand of that could probably be reallocated to something else.
And that's easy enough to do. We could certainly move that thirty thousand into the justice building section.
Yeah, I don't, I'll, I'll let it go. Yeah.
Okay, Councilor Hawk.
Right before we. I felt the same thing about the mower. On the other hand, they may very well be counting on perhaps getting an additional one. You know, mowers. They need all they can get. So I, I don't want to remove that until we've given that enough thought. But I was concerned when I saw that. The original thought for the justice building was five hundred thousand, which. Did include like the jail locks and the doors and so forth. And then that looks like that's been reduced down to seventy five thousand, which is a pretty large reduction. So. Just my, my concern there.
I can, it may help that part of the five hundred thousand, actually before that was over a million, was the. Terrace floor within the justice building facility was bathrooms within the facility. So as I said, we trying to keep an eye on and being aware of. Correctional officer and inmates' safety. We found the best way that we could reduce that amount at this point in time. And again, this is for this one year. So if there's another, if there's a some, another issue. As we are transitioning forward. Then we can look at the twenty twenty three bond, just as we are for the highways. Liberty Drive connection.
And, and I actually, that, that's also why I said we're move or reallocate the thirty thousand from Parks rather than remove because they're probably, you know, that I think. It would give the, the, the department flexibility to, you know, if the, some justice needs became emergent. Then, you know, you, you could probably, scope is broad enough that you could reallocate those funds. You know, we can, we can try to take care of the parks sooner and then those funds could still be in the bond. And I, Angie, I, I really appreciate you putting together this updated presentation. I think, you know, you already addressed. Pretty much all of my questions and concerns. This is a lot clearer than what we've seen before. So very helpful.
Thank you. Good. I'm glad it is.
Other questions to my left? Yes.
I had one. I, I'm always interested, of course, the previous discussions that were just had, but I wanted to expand it a little bit. On the sirens, the, the proposed amount that we're looking or you're, you're saying here doesn't mean that there is. A non-working siren that maybe wouldn't make that, I think, seven. Number cut, right? It just means that we'd be replacing seven at a time. Assuming they're fully functioning.
I can't speak to the functionality of our current sirens. That would definitely be a question for. Jamie, but I do have not heard they're not functioning. Anytime they've had issues with those sirens, they generally do additional testing. To make sure that they are in fact functioning. But the siren situation in this part is we have thirty nine of them that are aged. And they need to be upgraded, replaced. And so what we're doing now is. Instead of replacing all thirty nine at one time and then in ten years having to replace thirty nine again. We're able to, and they would be able to prioritize or use triage the, the ones that we have. And replace and repair those as, as we go through about seven at a time.
Okay. It, it, it does. I, I just always kind of like to stay, say this. I, I would not want. I would not want funding or a number not to address something that is not working. So. I'm assuming emergency management would let us know. If that were the case. And then the other thing is, I appreciate your comments on. People moving more to phone cellular alert. You are dead on about Steinsville. And it's alarming to me. One thing I would be interested for emergency management to, to let us know about. Is how many people are on Everbridge? Because it occurs to me, it's like a lot of programs that we have, we have a wonderful bell and whistle and then. Twenty two people using it. And, 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 and one thing is I have, you know, when the sirens go off on a pretty day, I'll, you know, I'll joke with someone. About, oh, something's going on, you know, and all that, because in the light of the moment, but what I have heard from a lot of constituents. How much they value those sirens. And so I'm curious about how we start segueing into other things. And if emerg, again, I kind of go back to this. If it's sort of like a previous comments I made during the budget on ambulances. If emergency management has a need or sees a need, please tell us before the tornado comes. We can figure out what we're doing and all this. So I, I just kind of throw that out to keep that kind of fresh with us. I'd, I'd love to have more information. About Everbridge and, and the sirens, if that's necessary, that we expand beyond that seven number. But I, but I wanted to throw that in the mix.
Yeah, well, I did speak with Jamie and she knew that this is what I was submitting.
Sure.
I, I do know, I do believe that she, if she was in a dire straits, she would have said, Angie, you know, that's, we need twenty. And. But I will definitely ask her to reach out to you guys and get you that information.
I, and, and I would normally not throw that out there, but I spent, and this is a different issue, but I spent a lot of time with. Hearing and learning about ambulances over the summer. And I've got all these healthcare practitioners say, we don't have any. And we're in trouble. And I'm not really kind of hearing that message come out of people. So now I'm sort of thinking about these things as, you know, maybe we have to prompt more from. Our chairs to, to kind of see. So I appreciate it, Angie.
No problem. Thank you.
I would comment that the siren subcommittee is meeting October eleventh. And I hope there will be more information before we discuss this again, so that you all can be up to date. We will be reviewing GIS maps of siren coverage. And what we don't have is good reports on. Cell phone notifications and how these are heard and responded to. I think all of you probably get alerts on your phone and they ask you to reply. That you receive something, you know, say yes. And that is not always terribly effective way of measuring response because people just don't, don't pay attention. But. We do need to know more. We need to integrate the siren and cell phone alert systems.
So thank you, Angie, for putting this together. I had a quick question, a small question in regards to. Department furniture needs. I know a couple of the departments that I'm liaisons for have mentioned that they are. Of need of furniture. And I just was curious to know, is there a growing list that you already have or like? How do you implement who gets what in terms of the furniture needs?
Okay, the furniture. Generally, how we've been handling this is that. We initially approached it on our departments that needed like a general renovation of their space. And so when we did that, then we would also upgrade their furniture. I do know that we have some people, for instance, in the, in the justice building, well, the clerk's office specifically, they have asked. For new desks and furniture and I've asked them to, to wait unless there's a, obviously unless it's. Not functional, but to wait because what I would like to do is. And be more responsible use of dollars is to. In three, five years, we're going to know where they're going to be. They're either, you know, that may be staying in the justice building. Or they may be going to a new facility. When they're going to the new facility, then we're going to want to give them. New furniture. So, so at this point in time, what I've asked for from our department heads is let us know what, you know, when you've got something that. It's just needs to be replaced because it's not functional or you have somebody who has a specific need. But if we can continue on. Through the next three to five years, that, that would be the, the ultimate, ultimate request. Does that help?
Yes, yes, that sums it up perfectly. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. On a more lighthearted note, every time we talk about sirens, I always think of Warren Henninger who pronounced sirenes. Which I guess was a Texas thing, but yeah, sirenes. But more seriously, I, I, I really hope that we all agree to include the T S D. Appropriation in here in the bond. This is very important. I mean, we're, you know, a lot of this, the buildings are protecting our historic buildings. We also have to protect our data. And, you know, I think it's the, the threats to data everywhere. You know, we read about them all the time in the news. And so I'm really glad to see that, that this issue is actually being, that the commissioners of T S D are being proactive about this.
Just the comment talking about dear Warren Henninger and the sirens. I also remember that Kirk White was very instrumental in making sure that the sirens were. Placed appropriately throughout the county to try to make certain, I can, I can remember the circles on the page of how. Where they would go and how many people they might, might be able to hear them. And so. It's a reminder of Warren Henninger, of Kirk White and those that have been involved in this for so many years. So we have to, we have to cover that. But look at what we have as you're talking about with T S D and protecting our data. That, that was something one wouldn't have even had to think about thirty years ago when I started. So things have changed and we have to stay with the times and protect our historic buildings. And also provide the services for public safety. So.
Any other comments or questions from council? On the presentation?
Sorry, just one, one more. Just can, can you describe the timeline on the bond?
The, the timeline is essentially, we are going to notice your October regular session for a public hearing. That will be also be the second reading. So if you approve it, then we will then do another set of notices to people who will actually buy the bonds. And the, the goal is to have them closed prior to Thanksgiving. Or at least sold prior to Thanksgiving. Typically, it takes a couple of weeks after you get the accepted bid to get the, the money. So we should have it no later than early December.
Okay. And then do, you know, I know the markets will do what the markets do, but do you have any estimate on the interest rate that you're? Okay, and then do, you know, I know the markets will do what the markets do, but do you have any estimate on the interest rate that you're hearing from our analysts?
The expectation is is around three percent, hopefully a little under. The the days of a three quarter percent one year bond are over, I think, for for at least a foreseeable future.
So given that, the impact on the community, we aim to keep it the same in terms of our taxpayers. So I'm just making sure that as presented, this this bond maintains the same tax rate.
I I would be surprised if it didn't reduce it a little bit, given the increase in assessed values. Again, this gets in that pie, gets divvied up amongst all the things. So an increased in assessed value with a minor increase in in a in a in a cost like that, I think, would be neutral. If not, a small reduction.
Okay.
One would expect that it would be a lower tax rate.
Yeah.
It had better be.
One, yeah. Wanting to kind of clarify the impact, because it's a lot of different things on that list. Any other questions or comments on this item? All right, then we'll close the discussion and look forward to hearing from you on the eleventh.
And I would just say, if you have any comments on the list, I know that Angie presented, let us know. So that we can be ready for the October meeting.
Will do.
Also, just so everybody's aware, I put this in the shared Dropbox for everyone. And then I also had printed off copies for you guys to have in front of you. So just reach out.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
So our next item is item C.
Counsel, I moved to open for discussion and established this is the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty two dash thirty four. Ordinance authorizing the issuance of local income tax revenue bonds and bond anticipation notes for the purchase. For the purpose of purchasing land for new jail and other related expense.
Second. And I guess when I presented the last one, I indicated that it's just like the the Geo bonds we've done. This is a totally different type of finance. This is not like last year's G R bond or anything else. If you look historically, this is probably much closer to what we look at when we look at a redevelopment commission bond in the West Side Tiff. Where we, it's a revenue bond, so it's based on income coming in. It will have a property tax backup. And just like when we talk about the West Side Tiff, we put that property tax backup in so that we give people who are buying these bonds. A little more assurance, so that will hopefully lower the interest rate. And so that is the purpose of that. This bond is up to ten and a half million dollars. Our edit estimate for next year is above that. So we really don't think there's any anticipation we'll ever have to use that property tax backup. And I would say if we do have to use that property tax backup, it's because of a decision the county council made and other appropriations within that fund. Bond anticipation note can can hold up to five years. You can have that up to five years and then it graduates into a bond. I think the anticipation when we when we take this to market, we will have a have a callable after a year. And have a probably a shorter end date, because the the goal is to. In a year or so from now, as we move forward with the, and I guess maybe the first thing I should say, that the project that this is to purchase the. Property for a justice facility. Currently, we're looking at the Fulton Pike property. We have a purchase agreement for that. There are some contingencies in there. One of, and the closing date on that should be prior to the end of the year. We structured this bond so that it could be used for that and any, and if, and for some of the expenses we've had in preparing it. And then if there's anything left over for any future expenses, we have in looking at that property. But it also, but it doesn't mention that property specifically, knowing full well that, you know, if something happens to that. We still have the the ability to utilize this funds for for whatever other site we use, including the preparation to determine if it's. If we want to have it plus any, you know, design or any of those kind of costs as well. So that's the project. And so when we're looking at this, we're we're hoping that we can have this. And then prior to that end of the five years, most likely between twelve and eighteen months. We would refund this bond and then and then make it into a much larger bond, which would include any construction costs we have with that project. At that point in time, we'd probably have to pull in our building corporation due to the constitutional debt limits. And so utilizing that structure, because, you know, if you build a facility. And I think the edit bonding capacity is between seventy and ninety million. Given construction costs, I don't want to give it, I couldn't give a solid estimate on what it would cost, but I think fifty million dollars is conservative. Conservatively low for what the 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 cost of a new facility will be. So, you know, you're talking a large number, so we want to make sure we have that in a building corporation. Because that gets us out of our two percent constitutional debt limit. Which is the most you could get any kind of debt for. And so. I won't go into it tonight because it's fairly complex, but that's a mechanism that's been utilized in order to be able to afford these kind of projects. And still have the ability to do other projects in the future if something came up. So this one's totally different from the last one. The project's much more straightforward and and I think understood. If you guys have any questions, I'm more than happy to to answer them. I guess timeline wise, I think we're looking at the same interest rate in the same timeline as what we discussed with the Geo bond. It'll be on your agenda in October with the hope to close it and get the proceeds early December. So that when we do go to close later in that month, we can, we will have the funds available.
Thank you. Lots of hands on my right. We'll start down at the end with Peter.
I really appreciate you not only coming back and talking about this, but also coming to the Community Justice Response Committee and talking about it. I think that was really helpful, because those folks, I think, really appreciated kind of that eagle eye view of this whole process. And one of the questions that came out during that process was the the idea of a master planning procedure. To talk about putting buildings onto this land that we're talking about tonight. And and I just wanted to clarify that that process has not started yet, correct?
We, not not specifically, right? I mean, when, as we go through the process of determining, you know, whether this parcel will meet our needs. We're looking at buildable area and we're kind of looking at footprint of other current jail facilities. We're also looking at the full footprint of, hey, how much space are we currently utilizing for all our justice components? That are currently downtown, we're making sure. I guess when we looked at this property, when we began this process, we wanted to have people have the option of, hey. If it turns out that we we want to move more than just the jail, or we want to move other types of facilities out there, we have the space. And maybe selfishly, from from my perspective, we also want to make sure that the guy who comes in and takes over for me. In twenty, thirty, forty years, doesn't have to try to find ground of adequate size to build a facility. Because, you know, ideally, I, you know, and we've had these companies, ideally, it would be downtown, right? If we had the adequate space, but in order to do a facility and provide for the adequate drainage and do all those things. Are 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 the people who are doing our site assessment, who have built jails before, says you need about twenty five acres of of ground. Now, that doesn't all have to be buildable, but you have to be able to count for all those things. And, you know, it's hard to find twenty five acres that is ready for development today. I can't imagine that's going to get any better in the future, right? It's 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 just kind of, it's a difficult nut to crack. And I were hoping we cracked it for at least two times. And I think in the criminal justice or community justice response, we still got that last moniker in my mind. You know, part of, part of what the what their task with doing and what I, what I think is is interesting is. And it came up a little bit at the conversation that I was involved in is, you know, in an ideal world, we would build one building, one jail. With enough space that when it comes time to replace it, because jails age quicker than normal buildings. They're used hard, that we could just, you know, build out the part we'd already had on the roof and just kind of transfer it over. And then, you know, kind of think about if, I mean, if you could do that back and forth. I think the way they construct the new jails, the shell of the building probably is not going to age any quicker than a normal building. It's the, it's the insides, because there's there's space between the two. So I'm interested to see if that goal can be achieved and, you know, we can find the ways to, you know. Do true corrections as we move forward.
Yeah, that's, that's a good answer. I don't want to get down into the weeds, but I do appreciate you explaining these financial instruments to a wide, diverse of audiences. I'll stop by talking.
Yes, I listened to the meeting from the other day and I was really impressed by your thought. In what sounds to me like that the bigger shell that we could afford to, we can figure out how to build this big shell. Because we can later, as we go, decide what we want to do with the square foot within the shell. And it will be less expensive to build the larger shell than it would be to have to keep adding on to that shell, seems to me.
And I I think you're talking less expensive in a variety of ways. One would be construction costs, because, you know, redesigning a new addition and all that costs more than just doing it upfront. I also think if you if you look at a, we, when we toured Hamilton County, the 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 area we toured was the new part of their their. We never saw the old part, but they clearly weren't attached. They clearly needed almost two different staffs, one to run the old and one to run the new. So if you could get it all designed so that you could make the most efficient use of staff time. Because, you know, one of the areas since I began working here, that we've always struggled with turnover and those kind of things is our jail staff. They've got a tough job. Some of that has to do with how our current facility is designed. Some of it has to do with the job, right? I mean, there there are things going on there that that are more difficult than than what I do, right?
And then I, having to do with financing and the dollar amount. If this was a normal financing that government would normally do for a building. What is that top amount that it doesn't go to referendum? Is that still twelve million? It can't go more than twelve million or you have a referendum. But would this be different because you're suggesting it would be with a building corporation?
No, I think, since this is a, to do a general obligation bond, there are different levels. And they started off at like five and I think started off at five and twelve. Where under five, there's one set of procedures between five and twelve. There's a second set of procedures and over twelve, and I I think twelve's that starting number. They they all have tied it to some kind of escalator, so I don't know what that is. But I think over twelve, you then you have to go for a referendum. So but since this is a revenue bond and not a, not a general, property tax based bond, those processes aren't aren't the same.
Quick, so you mentioned at one point the that that we would only need the property tax backup if the county council made certain decisions. I thought I would address that and just just make sure you were aware that the county council intentionally did not budget anything. In in fact, we even had a small expenditure initially proposed for that and we've taken out everything. So at this point, there is nothing in the edict.
And I know that, but I also know that we've just gone through a harrowing time in our nation's history with with the with the health emergency. And so I no longer want to take anything for granted, right? Something could happen tomorrow where you guys have to make decisions. And I'm just letting you know that. That there there could be a consequence to some of those decisions and, you know, there's consequence to every decision you guys make. But that, but I wouldn't want you to think that it's. It would be any, that the cost would be anything more than an additional property tax that was.
I just wanted to make it clear, everybody knew that we cleared the decks for this specific project and with the intention that this ban bond was coming.
And I was aware of that.
Questions or comments to Myla?
Okay, sorry. So with the financing, is it looked at every time we do another project? No matter where the dollars are coming from. If it's backed up with a general obligation, then is there a total? Is that why you're saying it's important that that the council? And the reason why I ask you this is that we were told when they were discussing the convention center financing. That whatever financing there would have to be backed that by general obligation in order to get the best interest rate. So is that why you're saying we need to watch what we're doing?
I think you need to watch what you're, not not because of that project particularly. But there is a constitutional limit on how much property tax and it's two percent. And there's a statute that I think makes it a third of two of two percent. So there there's a finite number out there that we are not by law allowed to issue more debt than our assessed value. It's a percentage of your assessed value.
Okay, but the question is, are you saying not just the debt, but any debt that's backed up with general obligation? Is that tied to that percentage? I I I know you're not supposed to ask questions unless you know the answer, but I don't know the answer, so I'm asking you.
And and in some ways, it's kind of definitional, right? Because what the what a building corporation does and what we, how we've utilized in the past, kind of changes that definition of that financial obligation. From a debt to a lease payment, which is different than a debt. So, you know, that's why, you know, when we go and do the, with the building corporation, we want to utilize that lease process. Because we know this is going to be a big, a big debt. The convention center. Again, we've always, we have a convention center building corporation too. So we've kind of structured it so that we could utilize it in that way as well. I mean, at the end of the day, there's a, there's a constitutional and there's a legal limit of what you can, of what you can issue in debt. There's also a financial and kind of more practical limit to what you can issue by debt. And so, you know, one of the reasons that this proposal uses the economic development income tax is that it is a standalone source of revenue. That has not been utilized for any other purposes so far. We've never received it before. And so we know, but it's also income tax. We know what the history of our income tax is and we have a pretty good idea that that that's safe. And we can convey that to people who will will buy the debt. So in in that regard, you know, the convention center utilizing, you know, a set aside in keeper's tax. Or in the case of what's being discussed with the the convention center expansion, the food and beverage tax. Has that kind of siloed, here's where that. I don't want to go so far as to say it's got the history with the income tax, because, you know, it was rolling along. Covid hit, a lot of rough waters there, and now it seems to come back, which is a much different history than our than our than our income tax. Our income tax has been pretty steady, every, it'll go down a little bit sometimes, but generally it won't go down very much and it rebounds. You know, that food and beverage, I think it was like the fourth year we've had it, the third or fourth year we had that in place, kind of plummeted for about. You know, a while, you know, at least six months, if not a year, year and a half. And so from a financial advisor perspective, I think they'd be seen as different, right? I would not, if we were going to do this based upon the food, and if I'm getting too far off subject, just let me know. If we're going to base this on the food and beverage income tax, I don't think I would came and told you, hey, we expect it to be a three percent interest rate. I think it would be much higher because there's much more risk associated, just based on the history.
Sorry, I didn't really mean. Sorry, I didn't really mean to. We'll, we'll have this conversation.
It's, 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 it's interesting. To me.
Back to our regularly scheduled programming. Um. I actually do, I have, I have a question to clarify just the math that's in my head. This amount is 10 million, 10 and a half million.
Yes.
And the property we're considering aligns with that in terms of the price. Um, and it was 35 ish acres of buildable.
The, depending on how you, you slice it, but I, I think, I think 35 buildable is probably a good estimate.
So that's about $300,000 an acre. For this land.
That is the appraised value.
Dear Lord, is all I have to say about that. Um. What we're talking about right now though, is not the purchase of the land. We're talking about making money available for purchase of land in general.
For the use of a, a justice facility.
For the justice, uh, center, whatever that might be. And if and when a, a contract for purchasing a particular property is brought forth. That will come to us as well for approval?
Well, if we did it something different, right? Cause we've already brought the, the, the one for the Fulton Pike to, to the county council and it's, it's been approved. Uh, the purchase agreement has been approved. So like, you know, the path we're on is that, is that property. And, and I. And so it won't come back to you guys for that one. If we, if we have to pivot and we have to look at a different, a different property, absolutely. And we will have many meetings to try to figure out how to pivot and what's the best way to do it. But I'm, I'm not saying we're going to pivot, but, but that we wanted to make sure we had the ability to if we had to.
Any other questions or comments from council? We are on which item? I'm so sorry. Let's see.
Now back to A.
No, we're on C. Right, right, right. So. So we have, we will also be hearing about this on the October 11th. All right. Thank you. Sorry, left. He's like, I am so done. All right, back to 12A now.
Counsel, I move to approve the request to amend the 2022 salary ordinance in the elected officials compensation section. And add account line 17796 voter registration per diem to fund 12150010. Election fund voter registration with a rate of $6.50 per day for 246 workdays per year. Along with the detailed information as set out on the agenda.
Second.
And it looks like we have Ms. Brown here.
Thank you. Good evening. Again, my name is Darla Brown and, uh. Clerk Brown, uh, asked me to extend her apologies for not being able to be here this evening and for the last meeting. Um, it just so happened that she had a conference lined up and a trip with family that was planned last year and I, I watched the cats. Meeting and I know the frustration, uh, you felt probably, but in any event. Um, she wasn't here the last time because she was attending a, um, Southern District Clerk's Fall Conference, which was in Southern Indiana. And I don't know if this made the news or not, but since then she attended the, um, conference by the Association of Indiana Counties. And your clerk was awarded the Outstanding Clerk of the Year award. So I didn't know if you knew that. I didn't see it in the paper. There you go. So in any event, I am here on behalf of Clerk Brown, um, as noted to request. The, um, salary ordinance amendment for a per diem to bring her current for this year for the 22, um, salary year. And so I don't want to, uh, belabor this. I know that we've exchanged correspondence, uh, through your council. And the last time I was here, we set forth our reasonings as to why we thought Nicole was entitled to a certain amount. We talked about how elections are getting more difficult and also the duties of the clerk. So in any event, unless anybody has any questions. I think that's it. But in any event.
Okay.
We appreciate your time.
Thank you. Um, do. Do you have, um, any, anything to add on the item, Ms. King?
I don't think I have much to add outside of what's in the agenda. This is a per diem that's required by state law. Um, specifically IC 371222. Um, it's set up in the same, um, manner as, um. I mean, the county council decides the amount. Um, it's paid in the same manner as the, uh, election expenses. So it come from general fund. There is a statute, um, that says a elected official's compensation can't be changed in the year that it's fixed. But in that statute, it specifically exempts the, um, payment of per diems. So I don't think that statute would apply here. Um. I think that's it. Unless you have any specific questions.
Okay, um, I'll turn it over then to council colleagues. Do you have any questions or comments? Yeah.
And just to clarify, there is no statute that specifies or gives any range or guidance on the amount of this per diem, right?
Correct. Um, and the statute that sets out the per diem is Indiana code 37122 and it simply says in a county where. Circuit clerk serves as a voter registration officer, the clerk is entitled to a per diem compensation. And that it will, the per diem is set out in the same, or is to be paid in the same manner as election funds. There's no guidance within that statute that, um, establishes an amount.
Question, other questions or comments?
So I just want to be clear. We're talking about the voter registration duties of the clerk and not, and not, uh, managing the elections.
That's correct. He's from my perspective.
Okay, thank you.
I want to take this opportunity to say the deadline to register to vote is October the 11th.
And early voting starts?
October the 11th or 12th.
Yep, thank you. Um, any other questions or comments on this item?
May I ask a question? Are you, are you able to share with me how the council came to its amount of 650 per day per diem?
Um, we are through our attorney, I believe.
I think, I think any council member, please correct me if this is inaccurate. We discussed and looked at comparisons. Um, comparison counties and as what they pay their clerks. Um, and the information that the, uh, clerk provided us. And we took into account specifically, we folk, I believe the council focused on her voter registration duty solely. She, the clerk receives compensation for, um, the election board and other election functions through her salary. So we specifically looked at what voter registration was.
How I recall it too. Um, any? Other question? Thank you. All right, um. Making sure that we have any public comment on this item. Seeing none, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor McCam?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wilt?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Great, thank you for your time. Thanks. That brings us to item 13. And this is employee and elected official compensation. So I would like to have, um. Further discussion and open the floor for discussion here regarding the, um. Inflation adjustment supplemental that we talked about earlier, the recruitment or referral supplemental. Um, that we brought up last meeting as well as the elected officials. Compensation and I will entertain any motions from council members regarding these topics. Um, but first I'm going to have Michelle give us an update on, um, any. On how these were advertised because we have already advertised things in, um, for next year's budget.
Uh, yes, so, um, at the, um, last. Budget session, council discussed adding a, um. Call it, an inflation, you know, adjustment supplemental, uh, kind of bonus. And so, um, Bree and I worked on. Um, adding that to each of the funds that had personnel. And so, um, with the fact we went and counted the employees that were within that department. Added that amount. And then if that department had grant funds, we went ahead and included the grant people. Within that, um, so if they had a general fund, we put it in their general fund because we know that the grant funds. Uh, had not, um, taken into account this particular bonus. So, um, we advertised high enough to include a bonus for all employee, Monroe County employees across the board. At $2,000. That also included the elected officials as well as the chief deputies. So that is included and budgeted. Um. And then we also, you've mentioned having a recruitment referral supplemental, um. And with that, I, I reviewed a, um, hire report that. The personnel administrator had given and I came up with about 150 employees on average. Um, and I think Elizabeth, uh, Santa Stein, she's on, you know, on the, uh. Waiting room, if you would like to hear from her as well, what she feels like, um, a number wise. So I, I put that within the HR, uh, personnel budget. And just put it at 75,000 because I put 150 people or referrals. And then at $500 apiece. So that's what I came up with. So it's been budgeted in there as well. Um. And that's where we're at with that. I went ahead with regards to the elected officials. Um, I butted, budgeted them at the, uh, 5%. So I, um. Uh, with that and which included, you know, the chief deputies. So I didn't make any changes with regards to that, but we did budget high enough that if you do wish to make changes, it is flexible enough in there for you. So that's where we're at on that.
Great, thank you very much. It seems like to me, um. It would be helpful to talk about these three things separately. Um, and so first I think I would like to talk about the. Um, inflation adjustment supplemental, which I have to get used to saying, cause that's not what I was referring to it and as in my head. And. The amount that we had indicated in some of the things that we had discussed included. $2,000, um, for each full-time employee. And I believe we talked also about, um. Not doing that for, um, elected officials. My personal thinking on that is that they're not employees necessarily. And don't need to be treated as such. And. In order to address the chief deputy, uh, conundrum that kind of came up, I would suggest. Half of that amount for chief deputies. So a thousand dollars for each chief deputy. And then we also talked about paying him out, paying it out quarterly. Um. And so it's paid to the position rather than the person also and. Correct. I'm looking at, I'm looking at Bree to see if I'm getting the, the logic right, but. That to me indicates that then if we hire someone into a position. They could assume the rest of that sort of prorated, um, inflation adjustment supplemental.
That's just what we, we call.
I'm trying to be consistent with what was written, so, um. And I, I, so I, I guess I like, kind of like that idea that it's almost then a sign-on bonus of sorts. Um, for new hires as well. Um. And my question then would be. Funding wise, is that budgeted through the departments at that level? Um, rather than separately and elsewhere and okay.
Yes, each department will be responsible for paying it out for their, for their employees.
Great, okay. That is the Kate understanding of things. Um, and I'm hoping that's. Ringing bells and, and shared with at least some of the, my council members. Does anyone have any other comments on? The inflation adjustment supplemental? Or questions and. I would entertain a motion if somebody thought maybe they want to do that too, but.
I'll start with a question before a motion. I'm concerned that it's called an inflation adjustment. And that is because we are projected to have inflation adjustments. Uh, year after year after year going forward. And we cannot count on doing this kind of adjustment. Year after year after year.
Perfectly reasonable.
So let's think of a different name. Let's call it a 2023 bonus. Or a 2023 supplemental or something like that.
Just retention supplement. I mean, I think that's what we had originally talked about, that's retention.
That, that would be great.
Okay.
Let's do that. So, okay, a second point is that, uh, we also, uh, talked about part-time employees. And how they are to be supplemented. And I believe it was to be, uh, half again, so 50%, is that correct?
That is my understanding.
Or to be prorated to their, uh.
Hours?
To their hours. I don't know which it is. We need to talk about that.
I, I just want to say if you're going to prorate it to hours, that will be a nightmare for me trying to calculate. I don't know how many part-time people each department has. So I did not take part-time people into account. So we would have to go back and. Uh, I know that we advertised high enough. We would just have to make sure that when you make the final. Of determination that we'll have to make sure that we have that amount correct in each department's budget. So.
I appreciate.
I mean, one way to do that would be just to, just to set a threshold and just say, you know.
Yes.
20 hours are greater, you know, part-time, 20 hours or greater is half.
That's exactly what I was.
Because I mean, what we don't want to do is pay a full, you know, the full bonus to, or retention bonus, somebody's working three hours a week. And that's.
Exactly.
Yeah, part-time includes such a wide range, so.
But we do have a number of regular, uh, part-time workers.
So, yeah, I mean, something like a thousand dollars quarterly, return, uh, annual, sorry, paid out quarterly. Retention, uh, retention supplement for part-time people working 20 hours a week or greater.
That sounds good.
Right, right, hourly, yeah, part-time.
I think that's very reasonable. Um. Any other questions or comments? I, um, I would like to. I would like to vote on something for this so that staff can go ahead and get working on it. Um, should I just make a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to move that we, um, add the 2023 retention supplemental. Can I just say as described in see the minutes?
Yeah, I'll have to go back. Sorry, I'll have to go back. I didn't quite hear what Counselor McCam proposed for.
I can briefly, I can go over it real briefly again. It's, um, it said at $2,000 per full-time position. Um, 1,000. $1,000 to chief deputies. Not, not including elected officials. $1,000 to part-time hourly employees who are at 20 hours per week or greater. And paid quarterly. Through the departments. And have I forgotten anything?
Second.
And you called it the.
I refer to it, 2023 retention supplemental. Are there any further questions or comments on the motion?
The only thing is, you know, I think in general, the idea that, that departments and the benefiting funds pay for it. Themselves, but for some grants, we may need to subsidize it depending on the terms.
Yes.
You know, obviously, we'll want to minimize that to the degree we can, but. Yeah, try to get the grants to pay for it, but understanding that we might have to subsidize it.
I just want to take a step back and say, I think this is a really good idea. I'm really glad we're doing this. And I think it's really needed for our department heads. Just really good ideas.
Any other comments, questions?
I was just, I agree with what Counselor Iverson said, and I think that there's. A lot of makes sense provisions that we've discussed at length in the previous meeting and I, I appreciate. President Wiltz for keeping on this and keeping us on this.
Okay. You did not include. What I heard you speak of earlier. That it would be with the position and not the person. So it's really not retaining. It's like. Because I really thought if we were talking about retaining the people that we have right now, we would say if you are employed. X date, then you would be qualified for this if you are already an employee. So. But evidently, that's not. What we're doing.
You should probably clarify that. But I mean, I think that makes sense. Did you, you look like you had something to say, Bree?
I thought you were, when you were talking about the. The recommendation bonus. I didn't, I don't recall that being part of this, but.
Okay, you mean last time? Yes. This is something I was thinking about since then. And what I would think is that if someone is employed at the quarter mark when. The payment is to be made, then they would receive that you made it to this point retention.
But when did they start? Because you don't want somebody to start a week before that quarterly time comes up. And then they get it for being there for a week. So I think we need to say if they're employed at the beginning of.
So there has to be a minimum term of employment.
I mean, you could do it as a quarter. You could just do it as a rolling quarter and just say that, you know, that. If the first payment is January 1st, then the effective date you would have had to be employed by was three months before that. The next payment would be a quarter later, but you'd have to have been employed by January 1st. You could do it that way.
Yep.
We could use an absolute, like say, everybody is employed as of today.
Right.
We could do it that way, or we could do the.
If you said everybody's today, then it would really be. True retention. Because otherwise, there's going to be people trying. I'm not saying that you try. It just would work out that maybe they would start a week before they would get this quarterly.
So in order to receive. Any payment from this retention supplemental. The employee would need to have been employed for at least. One quarter of the year, or three months.
Keeping nightmare. See, yes. Have you ever done payroll? Okay, well, I have. And you, if you, the more stipulations that you change on each check that goes out. It's harder and harder for the payroll. So if we say stipulate, like you said, well, we could use whoever's employed as of this date. And then they would be, have this for retention bonus for next year for as long as they continue to be employed.
And it is a true retention.
That takes out my handy dandy little adjustment.
I'm sorry. That's okay.
I mean, one thing I do want to add to this, I know that. Yeah, that, that does create some, some ambiguity around retention. But one thing is. If you're offering this and you take this amount, this 2,000, and you break this apart by the quarters. You now have a, I believe, maybe I'm wrong, maybe someone will tell me I'm wrong. Do you have a significant? Reason to stick around for that additional quarter and then the next one and the next. So I. To me, I think that the, the, the act of having this. For a lot of people is a good reason to kind of think about sticking around. I mean, that's an additional amount in that quarter that you wouldn't get. I. I think a lot about benefits like that when I was with the state and even in the private sector. People think. About those things that are coming down the road, whether it's bonus days or this or that. And that amount, I believe, and again, I may be wrong. I think we put a significant amount that doesn't make it. You know, free parking pass. It's, this is, this is us investing in people and their time with us.
So can I, can I?
Were you proposing a change to the motion?
I'm saying, I'm saying that I don't think that this maybe is problematic about being a true retention bonus or not. I, I think that it is a retention. A retention bonus because that amount does that on its own.
So one consideration is that if. If it is a bonus for people who've worked the, the prior quarter. It would also serve as a signing bonus for people coming in to fill empty positions. Do you see what I mean?
That was actually my thinking when I was thinking of it, going to the position. And.
And payroll is not going to figure this out. It's going to be the department head.
Just thinking about the employees that we have now, and if we make it clear to them, this is, we're offering you this kind of. This is only a one time, and this is supposed to be helping to retain the employees that have been good enough to stick with us. Through a lot of trial and tribulations during this whole COVID period and so forth. And so it, that is not, it doesn't feel as much as recognition of that if you give it to somebody brand new. Starting in a department. So. I would really like for it to be for employees that are employed to the, either set today's date or a month from now. Set a specific date for, and because that shows up on the payroll records anyway, beginning date. Do you agree with Ms. Show? It shows a beginning date on the payroll records.
Yes, I mean, they, and that's. So that way it's like January, February, you're going to get paid March. So then April, May, you can get paid June. So. However, you want to do it, but that's the months I would prefer that we would pay it out. How you want to designate, you know, who gets what. But if we're going to do it quarterly, I would rather it be at the top of the quarter.
I see Kim's point, especially about carrying this over into another fiscal year. So if you want to pay it at the top of a quarter, it should. The whole process should start October 1. For it would be the quarter that proceeds January 1, 2023. The October 1 through December 31. Do you see what I mean?
That makes a lot of sense.
I completely agree on the paying at the top of the quarter. Also, just because right now it's what, September? This, this way we can give the employees some money sooner.
Absolutely.
Make them wait six months. That's not as attractive.
It'll be their, their New Year's splurge.
So do I need to, I mean, I. I don't think it, it matters or I don't think it changes the motion to say that it's starting with a start date of. We, sort of, you know, October through.
We could amend the motion to specify the period.
You go.
I move to amend the motion. By President Wiltz that the. Payments begin. For service starting October 1. Of 2022. And that the bonus payment be made quarterly. Following each. Service period of a quarter. And this is to be limited to payment during the year 2023.
Right. All in favor of, can I do a, can I do a voice vote on the amendment?
Yes.
This is all informal, so this is all just like a sense of the council.
Oh, I was really careful with that.
Make sure that it is formal enough.
So, right, like, okay, so. All in favor of the amendment as stated, say aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion passes or amendments, motion to amend passes. Do we have any other clarifications on the?
I do. I, I have one question. Okay, so we're going to start October. So the quarter will be October, November, December. So when do you foresee the first payment? Will that be the January or are we going to do? Okay, January. This one, I want to make sure. I, because I'm putting it in the salary ordinance, that's what.
And because, yeah, this is a lot of work for y'all. I get it. I appreciate that. I'd like to go ahead and do a voice vote if that's appropriate for the whole thing. Okay, all in favor of the. Motion for the 2023 retention supplemental, say aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion passes. Excellent, excellent. Regarding the referral bonus. Or supplemental, as it was described, this was something that was a little bit different and. Having talked with staff earlier today, it. Some, some implementation issues were brought to my attention. So this is the concept that someone. Starting new at a new job here with the county would indicate whether or not. They had been referred by a county employee and if so, who? And that person would receive a bonus based on that information. And. For a number of reasons that probably are best described by those who brought them up to me. It seems that perhaps what we would want to do is have. PAC develop some of kind of the bullet points, more specifics and, and then implement it. So kind of outline the process a little bit more clearly prior to appropriating the funds. I still think it's. A good idea and I'd like to do it. I'd also like to hear at some point from. Our HR department if that's how it's going to be managed, because that seems like the most. Likely department to have to do it. And we don't necessarily tell them. Everything they need to do. So I kind of wanted to throw that out there. Go ahead.
I, I just think we should include there that it should not be the elected officials.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Concentrating on like officials. We don't want to say, oh, you know. I recommended these people give me another $500.
I mean, not including. Yes.
I 100% support, I 100% support the idea of this program. I think there's a lot of details to be worked out. And also, you know, this is something that's been done in HR departments across, across the country. I, I think the idea of committing it to PAC is a good idea. I don't think this is the right time. We, we still have several presentations that we need to hear from. I. I don't think this is the time to go into the weeds on this. But I totally support the program.
The President PAC agrees.
Consider it so.
All right, person on PAC who'd rather not be on PAC, I'll do.
Okay, so the third topic then is elected official compensation. And.
Yep. Elizabeth Stinson Stein has, has been hanging on. If you want to talk to her about the retention stuff.
Yeah, sure. Sorry, is she on? She needs to be promoted, looks like.
No, you don't hurry up. I have.
Could we promote E? Yeah, there's.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I, I think if you're going to leave this to PAC to decide that I can save any. Information I have or, or anything to discuss with PAC at that time, if that seems more appropriate. I know you've still got. Things to talk about tonight.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I really appreciate that. And so PAC coordinate. Make sure she's there. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Elected official salaries. I would like to just throw out a grid with numbers on it and. And see how that lands as a proposed.
Sorry, before we move on, I have a, I guess, clarifying question posed by Ms., a department head. That says, so if an employee starts, and this I think is going back to the retention bonus. It says, if an employee starts in November, December of 2022, does he get the, he or she get the bonus or just if they started in October sometime?
My, my thought was that it was if the person had started by October 1st.
Right.
I'm Gus. I, I think I need to be able to share my screen. I haven't started yet though. But I also have adjustments.
That's a procedural question, is there, is there a reason why we couldn't also discuss this at the hearing date, or we already all looked up on the hearing date? It just seems like we've gotten really late, and we have two presenters, but still, we'd like our full attention.
Totally fine with that.
I would like to hear from our presenters, but I'm worried about our next regular session being so incredibly full with bonds and, and the first reading of the budget.
Most important thing we have to do is to make certain we've figured out what we're going to do about the salary, so they can put this.
So, yeah, we need to do that tonight.
That, I mean, let's get our work done first.
Apologies. Okay. This is tiny, so let me try to make it a little bigger, and and maybe this would be easier if I went there, I don't know.
Why is your screen so little?
Because it's not the same dimension, so I'm just sharing a window.
Huh, because. Yeah.
Yeah. I can, you mean slide this out like this?
Yes, there we go.
We can't, I've got too much stuff that I.
Wait, is that new potential total?
Right, do you have any columns that, that are not important that you can hide?
Is this what you learned?
Yeah, I thought, isn't, isn't column H? Column H is the bottom. So then anything from column H is.
Right, okay.
Is that okay? Got that, at least I can see it.
So if you hit it.
What, what would you like me to hide?
Okay, I'd like to get rid of the top menu bar. So the whole thing would get bigger, I guess. Can you do that, can we get rid, it's in Excel, right?
Wait, I think what you want me to do is this.
Yes, thank you, and get rid of, that'll do.
Okay.
I can't.
Sorry.
I'm going to get on Zoom so I can see it, it's fine.
Okay, um, alright, so this was created by Kim, and so I've, I've kind of feel like I want to make sure I'm representing it correctly as I describe it, but the first thing that I added specifically was the red, and I don't know what the Indiana code was, but I was told that we had to make sure that that was, we don't have the, these percentages correct for the surveyor. Is that correct, is there understanding, okay, so we're just gonna take that out, because it doesn't apply right now anyway.
Right, yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't apply, but, but if we did and we had a base, it would need to be one and a half times more for a licensed surveyor.
Alright. I truly don't know what all the colors mean, but.
I was just trying to do that across, so that when you went across, you knew what went with what.
I see.
In the breakdown on, like farther past H.
Oh, that, you have commissioner, it's 85%, but you actually have several options for.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there were, there were some underneath that, that.
I'm trying to propose 1% entries each position.
Oh, I got you.
Take that color off, so that's.
I'm trying to figure out how you did the supplemental.
It's just a way to get me on.
No, I do not, I'd like, I mean, if you have, I'm waiting for comments, and if you have ones, go for it.
The question that I had before, and I still, just, it's not that I don't want the auditor to make that much money, because I think the auditor's job is tremendous, it's one of the hardest things in county government, but I don't know why we, yes, I do know why we're not just adding that onto their salary, because then it's tied to, well, the chief deputy gets, you know, whatever, and the others are all tied to supplemental, so then the chief deputy does, yeah, so I understand the theory, but I also do not see what, how we're going to tie what that supplemental is for, because I don't think you could just call it a supplemental without something behind it, and if you say, well, it's because they cover the meetings, well then, does that mean, this is part of what state level accounts said to me, well, does that mean then they won't get it if they don't in, attend these meetings in person?
Well, much like I would think the, maybe this is apples to oranges, but much like the clerk doesn't register every single voter, but receives a compensation of some sort for voter registration, this is for the responsibility of clerking for the council and commissioners, not necessarily physical presence at the meeting, although she's here frequently.
And, I mean, and, and we, actually, you could really just say the auditor's salary is X, and put that 5,000 in there, and the chief deputy's percent of that is different than 90%, and there you go, you can fix it. Why, and there you fix it, you're not trying to like play games. What's it? Then, then you could just say the chief deputies would be tied to 90% of the $70,516, or whatever that base pay is.
Right.
Whatever.
So was, was the auditor's salary to be based on certification levels?
No.
No.
Auditor, no.
No, no, excuse me, not the auditor, the, the assessor is, but the auditor is.
Yes.
And that.
So I guess I was trying to avoid having people over 100% on my scale, which is, because that just makes me uncomfortable in general.
I agree, I understand.
So that's sort of why I did it this way.
One thing is, with those positions at that level and that percentage, I think that that base represents a really good number to begin with, to, to guide us for not only this year, but for future years. I also like the fact that we have these percentages where the other positions that feed off of that base and give guidance not only this year, but in future years. And I think future councils, if we adopted this model, much like we have for the last three or four years, future councils could come in, look at this, and they could have a discussion about that percentage versus having a salary discussion that is like spaghetti noodles. If we have the, you know, if you want to say 85, 90, 70, 75, 30, 25, whatever you want to say on these percentages on the non-100%, you can have a discussion on that percentage versus, I think, what we have dealt with for the last two, two to three years plus. And I think this is, I think that this reflects a good start towards some of that. Future councils may disagree, and that's in their purview, right?
So what I think is, is really important is, is having this, having the percentages and having a base salary allows us to have a grid, an actual grid, and that we've accommodated, I believe, the varying responsibilities of our different elected officials with the certification or supplements. So I'm, I'm liking this.
Are there any other comments or questions, yes?
I definitely, I, I'm uncomfortable with both the surveyor and commissioner, I, you know, I, I think the commissioner should be at 100%, but I, I would be satisfied with 90%. Probably the same with the surveyor, I, I think the surveyor's responsibilities have only increased from the way they were, you know, previously in this county. That, that would be my preference. Like I said, I think an argument could be made for commissioners at 100%, but I don't, I don't think I have that support.
Any other additions or changes, or want to see the math on something different?
I, I would not be comfortable putting commissioners that high, along with the other positions that have maybe the, the, those desk duties that are here in the building, they're, you know, that have those, those duties here, I, I would take them back down, and that would be my preference.
To 85?
Yes, to 85.
Specifically just the?
Just the commissioners, I'm okay with the, the surveyor being higher, however, when in parity, well, yes, that, that would, that would be my preference.
We may have to vote on.
What, yes, let's just.
Hold on that part.
Is that, it seems to be there's a difference in.
Sure, I like commissioner, why don't we just get that out?
So, okay.
Okay.
So.
I'll make a motion, I, I vote that we set the commissioner base multiplier percentage at 90%.
I'll second.
Almost, alright, so. Any discussion on Counselor McKim's motion? Alright, um, should, I think we should do a voice vote on this one?
No.
Oh, I meant, I meant a roll call vote, I don't know why I said it that way, I did, I did mean that, so please, if you could call the roll.
Okay, so this is the motion for setting the commissioners at the 90% level. Counselor Wiltz?
No.
Counselor Iverson?
No.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
No.
Counselor Hawke?
What did Counselor Deckard just say?
He said no.
Because I've, well, I'm just saying no, I thought we decided on 85, let's go around, so.
She says no, thank you. Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion fails 4 to 3.
This is really good. Democracy in action.
It is, okay, next motion?
I move to fix the commissioners' percentage as 85%.
Second.
Hard question.
Alright, let's vote.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Sorry, I just want to clarify that the, the alternative here is just the 5% increase, right? Is that what the, so in other words, if this fails, if nobody, if nobody's.
Or you could do another motion.
Or we could do another motion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, okay, so this is to, for the commissioner level to be set at 85%. Counselor Iverson voted.
I voted yes.
Yes. Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
No.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
No.
Counselor Munson?
She wants to say yes, just.
I'm going to say yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 2.
Great. Are there any other motions to change percentages? Now, I had the surveyor at 85, he's currently at 90, I feel like I'm on an auction. But, so I'm going to leave it at 90, and so that's going to be the motion, I suppose. I'd like to, to, if, if someone would like to make a more specific motion than what I have on the screen, inclusive of the surveyor at Randy and the commissioners at 85, please let me know. Otherwise, I'll, I'll ask for a vote on this exact thing.
The whole grid.
The whole thing, because I'm, I'm trying to.
Yeah.
Alright, okay, are there any other comments? So I was asking for a motion, but are there any other comments, questions, anything, alright. That's hilarious, so Michelle, could you do a roll call vote on the, the grid that includes the percentages, um, as, as displayed?
So I'm going to go, Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you, really appreciate it.
And that included the supplements too, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright. Thank you. I really appreciate you guys taking that time, alright. We have two presentations, the first one is our prosecutor Erica Alafon to give us an update on the racial justice data project.
Before we move on to item number 13, I am going to try to quickly redirect our attention to the retention bonus, as I have another clarifying question from Kim's phone.
No, I'm sorry.
I, I believe that October 1st is a Saturday, so do we intend for it, the bonus to be given to a person if they're employed the first business day of October, so the 3rd?
Yes.
So, a person starts on October 3rd.
So I hope we don't have people trying to game that system.
Well, and that, we, well, we've got a couple departments that say we've got new people starting on the 3rd, and I know of one that's not on this, that will have somebody starting on October 3rd, we have the public defender people will be starting on the 3rd, you know, so we just want to clarify because it's coming up through text messages, sorry.
So.
This is how the sausage is made.
This is my life.
We're making the sausage right now.
We are.
Yeah.
So. Um, thank you.
I would.
Is it the, is it the general consensus that? Is it the, is it the general consensus that the first business day of following the first of the month?
That is.
If it's not. Thank you. Okay. Alright. Now, we have a presentation from Erica Alafon on the racial justice data project. If she's still here, so bless her.
I am still here. No worries. Thank you for taking the time. We'll try to be quick since you've been at it for a while tonight, so. As the council knows, I came to you in January twenty-twenty-one and requested an appropriation to contract with Indiana University Public Policy Institute Center for Health and Justice Research on a racial justice data project to examine our capabilities to effectively gather data and also to identify racial and ethnic disparities that result from prosecutorial decision-making in Monroe County. The research team looked at cases referred to the Monroe County Prosecutor's Office between May first of twenty-eighteen, December thirty-first of twenty-nineteen. I'm happy to report that we actually ended up spending nine thousand eight hundred dollars less than we requested because we did not have to pay for the data polls as we had anticipated. The long-term vision for this project is, I, you know, I want to ensure accurate and thorough data collection and analysis by my office. I'd like to create a public-facing dashboard to make this data available to anyone online and increase transparency. And I'd like to track and release data for actions like charging decisions, diversions, plea offers, and sentencing more consistently throughout, like as we move forward. Dr. Eric Grauman is here with me. He is the lead on this project. He is an applied criminologist with the O'Neill School at IUPUI with PhD in criminal justice from Michigan State. So this evening, he will provide some overall takeaways from the, the pilot study. And we're calling it a pilot because we're actually just beginning our work in this area. Like I said, we're going to try to make it brief. I will say that the report that he's working from is still a draft. We're still doing revisions, but, but we still have some exciting details to share with you this evening. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Grauman now.
Thank you, Prosecutor Alafon. Would we mind if I shared the screen just to show the PowerPoint presentation?
Be great.
Great. Well, on behalf of my co-authors and the research advisory committee that guided this work, thank you for the opportunity for me to brief you this evening. As Prosecutor Alafon mentioned, this study had two primary charges. One charge was to examine data capabilities within the prosecutor's office. Strengths and weaknesses there or some gaps in where data could be available. And also explore the management of cases with a particular eye on racial and ethnic disparities at various prosecution decision points. So the focus of this presentation tonight then is on that second charge. To complete this work, we gathered data on all criminal cases referred to prosecution between May twenty-eighteen and December twenty-nineteen. We pulled our records from the Indiana Prosecutor Case Management System, which is the case records management system for all prosecutors across the state of Indiana. We also supplemented those records with internal records from the prosecutor's office. Once we had all these data in hand, then we also took all of that information and linked it to the Monroe County Sheriff's Office jail records. And we also tried to link some of the records to Monroe County Probation Department's records as well. So in today's presentation, we're talking about nearly nine thousand criminal cases that were processed across this period. Within the sample that we constructed, we created some additional measures that look at defendant case pretrial and evidence-based characteristics that may influence how prosecutors make decisions. So just to elevate some examples here, beyond simply looking at defendant race or ethnicity, we also looked at things such as defendant sex, age, criminal history, resident status. In terms of case characteristics, we are interested in who was the referring law enforcement agency? What was the type of case being referred? If this was felony or misdemeanor? Within those types, you also have levels as well. In terms of pretrial factors, we are interested in determining whether or not there were differences by those folks who were brought into the jail on a custodial arrest versus those folks who were referred to the prosecutor's office through a summons or a citation. We had insights on who the charging prosecutor was, who the assigned prosecutor was, who the judge was, et cetera, et cetera. And then for evidence information, we had a limited list of evidence that was available to the court. So with all of those characteristics at play, we tried to tease out whether or not there were racial and ethnic disparities. Before I start diving into the disparities, I just wanted to provide an overview of how cases were flowing through the prosecutor's office during the study period. We focused our attention on all cases that were referred from law enforcement. I want to make an important point here. We don't see cases where law enforcement may have stopped and questioned and then not cited or arrested an individual. We don't see cases that don't lead to a, a case being forwarded by law enforcement. We only see those cases that were received by the prosecutor's office. So we have to begin with that starting point. From that starting point, we can see the flow almost like a funnel of how cases make their way from, from law enforcement through the Monroe County justice system. So cases will be received by the prosecutor's office and they are screened to determine whether or not they will be filed for prosecution or declined prosecution. The northern kind of trail here is going to show you how cases continue to move into the system, whereas that southern pathway is going to show you cases that are starting to move out of the system. So after that decision point, once charges are filed and we are moving forward with prosecution, cases will then work their way to a resolution. At this time, things like a pretrial diversion program may be offered to folks who are eligible to, to participate. This phase will end with a case resolution, whether or not the case was dismissed, or I'm, I'm sorry, disposed with a guilty determination or a dismissal. Once we get past that phase, those folks who have been found or pled guilty will be sentenced. So this is the Monroe County justice system across the study period. Now that we have just a little bit of context about the flow of cases into the system, I want to start talking about racial and ethnic disparities at, at specific prosecution decision points. I want to make sure that we're clear on terminology here. When I'm talking about disparity, I'm talking about differences in a decision or an outcome that are based in part on defendant race or ethnicity. In short, one racial or ethnic group is better or worse off than another group, even when all the defendants are similarly situated. This is a little bit different from disproportionality, which is over or under representation of specific races or ethnicities to some anchor of a total population. Disparities and disproportionality tend to be thought of being correlated with one another, but they are distinct concepts. Most of the research that is done looking at racial and ethnic disparities is actually looking at disproportionality. Where do we see over and under representation to some type of population anchor? So the first point I'll be talking about is the charging decision. Here is a, an outcome about whether or not a prosecutor will file a case for prosecution or decline prosecution. To get a sense of the cases referred to the prosecutor's office, this gives us a breakdown of the defendants in the criminal cases that the department receives versus two types of census indicators. There's a US census indicator for Monroe County and then a pooled census indicator for Indiana University, which is a combination of faculty, staff, and students. In general, then, we can see that there's an underrepresentation of white, Asian, and Hispanic or Latino residents among the cases that the office receives. There's a large overrepresentation of black residents among the cases that off, that the office receives. And this has been consistent with some work that's been completed by the Monroe County Branch of the NAACP, who's also been producing some studies looking at racial and ethnic disparities in Monroe County's justice system across the past ten to twenty years. These findings are also consistent with some work done by Indiana University in partnership with the probation department. As we move forward, then, we're going to use this distribution as our anchor, meaning that we anticipate to see about eighty percent of defendants coming through the system are white. Sixteen percent of defendants are black. Three percent of defendants are Asian and two percent are Hispanic or Latino. So this becomes our new anchor as we look forward. We find that nine out of ten cases will be, that are, that are sent to the prosecutor's office will be filed for prosecution. We found no substantive differences between black, Asian, or white defendants on charging decisions. That means that the probability of being charged is approximately equal for those racial groups. We also found no differences between Hispanic or Latino defendants and non-Hispanic or Latino defendants. There was one disparity that we picked up on, and that is defendants with unknown races. Defendants with unknown races were less likely to have their cases filed compared to white defendants. We've been trying to dig into, tried to figure out what's going on with this category in particular. And so far, we're to two potential answers. One answer is that during the incident, race simply wasn't collected. That can happen, but we just don't have that information at all. A second is a little bit more of a statistical artifact, meaning that the case was referred for prosecution, but since the case is being declined, we're going to save staff members' time in having to input the information into the case records management system, and we just don't record all the information like we would if we were filing on a case. So we're still trying to tease out the explanation there. Next, let's move on to the second decision point, which is pretrial diversion. So as I think we should know, the prosecutor's office has a pretrial diversion program available. This program is open to defendants charged with minor offenses who have a limited criminal history record. It's also available to defendants charged with Level Six felonies for drug or paraphernalia possession. Again, even those, those cases that are charged at Level Six have to have a limited criminal history. Those folks who fulfill program requirements, pay program fees, and receive no additional charges will have their cases dismissed. So what we found is that at least seventy percent of those defendants who were offered pretrial diversion are going to enroll in pretrial diversion. When trying to tease out who is receiving the offer and who is enrolling, one of the, one of the difficult parts with this study is that we didn't have data on who received an offer. So we had to work backwards to try to identify those cases that should have received an offer based upon the case that was referred and the lack of a criminal history. So by simulating this off, offer decision, we found that black defendants were less likely to receive and enroll in the pretrial diversion program. When we tried to, when we are trying to dissect this some more to find out what sort of explanation can we offer for this disparity, we seem to be centering our lens on the use of criminal history records. It, it seems that criminal history records may be disproportionately excluding black defendants from being able to participate in pretrial diversion programs. The next phase that we looked at is case resolution. Here, we're talking about whether or not a case is resolved with a guilty disposition or a dismissed disposition. Across all the cases, more than half of cases that were filed will be dismissed. There were no substantive differences between black, Asian, and white defendants on whether a case will be disposed with a guilty verdict or a dismissed verdict. The estimates are approximately equal. Further, we don't, we didn't see any differences in case resolution outcomes between Hispanic or Latino and non-Hispanic or Latino defense, defendants. Beyond just this outcome of guilty or dismissed, we also were interested in the time to resolving a case. Here, we did identify some disparities. Black defendants had their cases resolved nearly one month after white defendants. Defendants whose race was unknown had their cases resolved ten days before white defendants. And Hispanic or Latino defendants had their cases resolved two months faster than non-Hispanic or Latino defendants. Last stage that we looked at was sentencing. So what happens once a guilty disposition has been found? What type of sentences are folks receiving? We found that most are ordered to community corrections. We use community corrections in this study. Super majority of these cases are actually going to be probation and not what we traditionally think of as community corrections. So most folks are receiving probation as a sentence. We have an other category that follows next. This other category is a non-custodial, non-supervision sentence. It consists of fines or community service or license suspensions. Next is time served and the final type of sentence with only eight percent of those folks who were found guilty is incarceration, which is a sentence to jail or prison. When we tried to tease out our folks receiving different sentences, we found that there was no difference between black defendants and white defendants, defendants with unknown race or white defendants and Hispanic or Latino and non-Hispanic or Latino defendants on every measure of sentencing outcomes, whether that was time served, probation, the, our other category, or incarceration. We also then looked at what was the sentence length for these sentences that were imposed. We didn't find any evidence of disparities for incarceration or for probation, but we did find that black defendants who were sentenced to time served accumulated eight more days or were held in jail eight days longer than white defendants. So what are the key takeaways then from this study? We found evidence of three disparities at pretrial diversion program agreement at the time it takes to resolve a case. And for those folks who have been found guilty, the sentence linked for time served. Across each of the decision points, the disparities negatively affect black defendants. Black defendants were less likely than white defendants to enter into a PDP agreement. Black defendants had their cases resolved nearly one month later than white defendants. And black defendants received sentences of time served that were eight days longer than white defendants. Regarding ethnic disparities, we found that Hispanic or Latino defendants had their cases disposed of faster than non-Hispanic or Latino defendants. We found approximately similar trends at all of the remaining decision points, whether that was charging, case disposition, sentence order, or sentence length. I want to be clear here. This does not mean, the absence of disparity here does not mean that there are no disparities at all. Since the processing outcomes were approximately similar by defendant race and ethnicity at multiple decision points, after we accounted for a variety of defendant case and pretrial factors, these findings imply that racial and ethnic overrepresentations and underrepresentations and possible disparities could be being reinforced as cases move through prosecution. They're not necessarily being amplified. They're not necessarily decreasing. They could be being reinforced. And our evidence here goes back to the idea that we see a rather large disparity in black defendants who are making their way through the system with an anchor of census information. Thank you for your time and attention on a late night. Happy to try to speak to any questions or provide clarification. Thank you for your time and attention on a late night. Happy to try to speak to any questions or provide clarifications as you see fit.
Thank you very much, Dr. Gromman. That was a lot to take in and really interesting. I'll open it up to my colleagues for some questions first, Counselor Everson.
Yes, Professor Gromman, thank you for bearing with us on a late night. Prosecutor Oliphant opened up by saying that this data is not yet complete, and I was wondering, what aspects are you still working on and when can we look forward to publication of this important study?
Thank you. Yeah, we have a few checks. We attended an attorney's meeting. I want to say this was two weeks ago at this point, to kind of brief the attorneys on the findings. And from that conversation, we learned a lot about some clarifications and some rechucks to go through the data. So we're going through that completely. I was hoping to have this done by the end of this month. The full report, all 200-plus pages. I think I'm going to need a couple more weeks, so let's aim for middle of October to have a complete report that is available.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. This is really interesting. I was wondering if you have any thoughts about the pretrial diversion with respect to the fees, if the fees might be a source of some of the disproportionate participation or disproportionate underparticipation in pretrial diversion?
We tried to look at. So in short, there's about 1,000 cases across the time period that enrolled in pretrial diversion. Unfortunately, we couldn't get every single data point out of the case management system to look at all 1,000 of those cases. But we did sit in the prosecutor's office almost every Friday for an eight-month period to collect data out of case files. So from that case file review, we did find, and this is just a sub-sample of about 500 cases, that only about 1% of pretrial diversion enrollments did the defendant make an ask for a fee waiver. So that at least gives us some idea about who is able to afford to go through the program and also some insights about who is petitioning to try to have their fees waived.
You said 1%?
1%.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Crossley.
Thank you for opening data project. I had a quick question in terms of, I want to go back to, and I kind of blazed over because I was a little surprised at this. You had mentioned that black defendants less likely than white defendants to enroll in pretrial diversion. I think you might have said, why? Can you go back over that one more time, please?
Yeah, so one of the really hard parts of trying to tease that relationship out is that we didn't have data on who received an offer. All we can see is that, all we can see is who enrolled. So this created a research methods problem for us to try to simulate, how would we identify cases that should have theoretically been offered a pretrial diversion program? So in in working through that, we looked at the most common type of charges for those folks who who enrolled in the program. We took that pool of charges and went back to the data to create a comparison pool of individuals who had the same exact charges. When going through that procedure, then, knowing that a limited criminal history excludes folks from participating in pretrial diversion, we found that there was a higher percentage of black defendants who would have theoretically been removed from an offer because there was a presence of a criminal history. So for us, that raised questions of how how is criminal history used to make these decisions in general? And then how can we reform the use of criminal history to look, use it in different ways? So let me just give an example. Let's say Eric has a criminal history and it's it's just an arrest, but that case was dismissed. And then you have Aaron, who is another client who has an eligible offense, has a criminal history, but that case was led to a conviction, and that conviction led to incarceration. We could potentially say Eric's criminal history, we can discount because there's not a conviction there. We shouldn't use that rest arrest against Eric. Maybe we think about the conviction and the conviction that leads to an incarceration term as an eligibility criteria. So that that's what I'm, when we created the comparison sample, then, we did find that blacks, black defendants seem to have been removed from the eligibility pool because of a criminal history record.
Thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Munson.
I have just a quick question. I really appreciate learning about this study, and I look forward to the final report on this. But could you clarify for me, what was the time period for your data collection?
It was May 2018 through December 2019, so 20 months of data. We did, we did that on purpose to try to avoid how the system has changed as we moved into the pandemic.
That's, that's good to know, and also it's, it reflects a difference in prosecutors as well, does it not?
It does. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Decker.
I just wanted to make a brief comment. I remember saying this when we first entered into the beginnings of this study. The easy and wrong thing to do would be to not look at any of these numbers. But our prosecutor and the county have very wisely gone to data, gone to information, and I, I appreciate that very much. I'm also interested in any, as the prosecutor digests all this, thoughts on things on their end as they continue to gather information and data and kind of any potential next steps that might be down the road.
Well, I happen to have prepared a little summary of takeaways for for the council this evening. You know, I first want to thank you all for giving us the opportunity to do this work. I do think it's important. It is obviously a little scary to be vulnerable and put our data out there, but I think that's how we, we work toward improving the system. So I will say that during the course of the study, Dr. Gromman identified an opportunity for grant funding to further study racial and ethnic disparities and improve transparency within our criminal justice system. So we have been selected for that grant funding to further our work in partnership with Lake County Prosecutor Bernard Carter and the Monroe County Branch in double ACP. So the new project is currently being developed. It's in its infancy, but it's going to be a 30-month project. We're hoping to, you know, continue the tradition of Monroe County serving as the model for the state of Indiana on on some of this work. Part of the funding will be used to develop the public facing dashboard that that I'm hoping to have so that this data can be easily available online. It will also allow us to take a deeper dive into diversion programs specifically to understand not just who actually accepts an agreement, but the offerings, enrollments, and the efficacy of those programs. So in the meantime, however, I'm not going to wait 30 months to do something. My office is going to look at changes both in our data collection practices so that we can capture some of our missing information that Dr. Gromman alluded to. But we're also going to look at policy. We're going to use, you know, our data collection to develop performance measures so we can monitor efficacy of policy changes in the hopes that we can actually show that we're reducing racial and ethnic disparities. For the data collection piece, we did identify gaps, like, for example, we weren't documenting who was being offered pretrial diversion in a way that we could collect easily. Only those who'd accepted the offer. We don't have an easy way to track what plea and sentencing offers have been made. So we're going to need to find a way to do that. I'd also like to have better documentation of our declinations and dismissals. So one thing that we're exploring is a further partnership with Indiana University to help us collect and analyze data on an ongoing basis. I personally think it's, it's advisable to have academics, people who have studied data and statistics do this work rather than trying to do it in-house. And I think we have some resources to do that. You know, as you've seen, Dr. Gromman and his team identified some specific areas for improvement, such as revisiting whether or what criminal history should be a barrier to diversion eligibility, and also revisiting some screening policy in practice. So, you know, how do we decide which cases we're going to decline and which we're going to charge? You know, keeping in mind that 55% of our cases were resulting in dismissal. Now, some of those because they did something to earn that dismissal, whether it was pretrial diversion or community service or something else. But, you know, we, we should maybe take a more critical look at at what is being filed in the first place. As Dr. Gromman said, he met with our attorneys, and I felt like we had a really great conversation about what these findings mean and how we might shape policy and practice to reduce disparities. And so we're going to continue those conversations, work on some policy development. But I can tell you that I was really encouraged. My deputies and I are invested in improving outcomes in Monroe County, and we have a lot of practical experience among us to sort of understand what is within our power to accomplish in this area. So once again, I really do appreciate your investment in this initial project, and I look forward to continuing to develop it. Thank you.
Wow, thank you so much. Are there any other questions or comments from my colleagues? I really appreciate, first of all, you're taking the time with us, and secondly, waiting for such a lengthy period to present the findings. But thank you for sticking with it and, and looking forward to seeing another report in the future, if you're willing, because this is, this is really impactful. I need to, to think a little bit about it. And I'll be looking at the summaries that you sent earlier as well.
Well, I, sorry, President Wilson, but if you have any questions or concerns, I would encourage you all to send them to us because as we're finalizing the report, sometimes it's good to know what, what questions we're leaving out there to see if we can answer them. So let us know.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks again. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you taking the time at the end of a long day.
That's what we do. That's how we do it. Thanks. Take care. Last but not least.
And the last thing between you and your families are cocktails, so.
The very best, United Way is here.
We are, we are really actually pleased that you're here, and thank you for your patience.
Of course. And I'm not sure who's going to run the slides.
I believe folks up there.
Okay.
Above us.
All right.
That we can't see.
Yes.
Yes.
Next slide.
We can have the presentation pulled. There we go.
Okay, great. Great. And I can even see it, so that'll help me.
Is there a way to switch the view from the presenter view to the, yeah?
Great. Yeah.
It's going to switch the screen. Yeah.
Yeah, well, while he gets that set, I'll just introduce myself. I'm Mary Morgan. I'm Director of Housing Security with Heading Home of Central, South Central Indiana. Sorry, it's late. And as, as you know, many of you worked on the Heading Home Initiative. It's a community collaborative. We're based at the United Way of Monroe County, but we're the United Way. We're the Community Foundation of Bloomington, Monroe County. We're Monroe County Government, City of Bloomington, and others. And so it really is truly a community collaboration that we're really proud of, and we thank you very much for the $1.2 million that you have appropriated for this effort and the $1.2 million that you've committed to, and some indeterminate yet to be determined purpose towards our sustainability. So tonight's purpose is really just to give you an update on some of the projects we're doing. We've got a lot underway, a lot being planned. And we're pretty excited about where we're headed right now. And if, if it's okay, you can ask questions. I'm going to go through this pretty quickly. But if there's any time you want me to pause, just let me know, and I'll stop and elaborate more. So many of you were involved in this process. It's, it's designed to focus on housing insecurity, to make homelessness rare, brief, and non-repeating. We're not a direct service provider, but we're looking at structural changes that we can make that will benefit the whole homeless response system and prevent people from dropping into homelessness. Next slide, please. The next one, too. And that's just a summary of our overall sort of high-level goals and our list of partners. Next slide. And a reminder of the advisory board, there are a couple of county representatives on there. Penny Givens from the Board of Commissioners and Angie Pretty from the administration. And then I'm just going to go right into the projects. Next slide, and you could probably go a couple. Yeah, this is just an overview of the things I'm going to talk about. It's a lot. So again, I'm going to go pretty quickly, high-level through, and happy to give any details either tonight or always reachable if you have questions following. We're really excited about the Built for Zero project. Built for Zero is a national initiative working with over 100 communities to end homelessness. They're providing a framework for us, and we joined in May. We are the first community in Indiana to join Built for Zero, and they were excited about that because they have a lot of West Coast, East Coast, South, but not a ton of Midwest. So this is a picture of the group, the core team that's working on this. We meet every week. We meet with data coaches. We meet with other sort of policy and strategy coaches that are helping us to just really take a data-driven approach to ending homelessness. We have a lot of work to do. I will say that, and we're at the very beginning of this journey. So we are a little bit overwhelmed, I think it's fair to say. But moving forward and really, I'm optimistic that this is going to make a transformational change in our community. Next slide, please. These are some of our initial go-goals. We're focused on data. We have a lot of work to do there, but we really hope that we'll be poised to put out a public dashboard in early 2023. It's kind of a vulnerable thing because we have, that data will probably look different over time as we expand the number of people who are providing data to the overall system and kind of clean up some of the things that, that were maybe not in the best of shape right now. But again, we're working with data coaches to help us get there. And we've chosen, Built for Zero emphasizes, starting with a particular group, so a category of people who are homeless. And we started with veteran homelessness, honestly, partly because it's a small group, relatively speaking. And it'll help us as we work through the system to just try to understand how we can make changes to benefit that particular group. And there are a lot of resources. We've started an advisory group, including Stephen Miller, who works here at the county. He's been a great resource, and so we're going to, we've already got some ideas part-to-partner and things for that, so I'm excited about that. Next slide, please. Okay. The next few things are going to be related to the South Central Housing Network. This is a group that is mandated to, if they get any kind of federal funding, HUD funding, they're mandated to be part of this network. It covers the Six County region, Morgan, Monroe, Lawrence, Owen, Green, and Martin. And we're providing logistical support, so I'm now on the board. We do things like take minutes and send out agendas and. We do things like take minutes and send out agendas and things like that. But we're also working on several committees for the Housing Network that I think will be helpful for the overall community. Next slide, please. Cross-Agency Training is one of the first committees. We recognized that many of the direct service providers had training needs and they didn't have the resources to address those needs. So we formed this committee with different representatives from direct service providers. And we're identifying, probably it looks like it's going to be quarterly training sessions that we can give starting tomorrow, actually. Next slide. So tomorrow morning, we're having our first training session. It's from nine to 11 at the mill. So you're welcome to come if you'd like to learn about housing first, which is kind of the philosophical underpinning for all of this work. We're going to have someone speak about the importance of housing first and then a panel discussion and then just an opportunity for staff to network and kind of start building a closer community of support. Next slide, please. We're also working on the Advocacy Committee. This is a group that's just going to, well, they are looking at issues that are related to the entire housing system and where we can advocate as a group or as individual agencies or even as individuals. And yeah, those are some of the members, New Hope for Families, Centerstone Housing and Eviction Prevention Program, and of course, Heading Home. Next slide, please. We're going to be developing a street outreach policy and we have a committee for that. So there's a lot of different street outreach groups at different agencies. And there's some informal collaboration, but we really think that there would be power in coming to a consensus about how to approach street outreach and kind of mapping the geography of where the different agencies go so that there's eliminating duplicative services and that kind of thing. So at the very initial stages of that, too, but getting support from templates that Built for Zero provides and other communities are using. Next slide, please. Yes, Positive Link has been a good partner. So stepping a little bit away from the Housing Network, we're developing a Housing Navigation Resource Guide with Meyerson Consulting, Deborah Meyerson. We know that many different agencies have their own resources, like they have a guide that they use. But then, and sometimes they share, but it's not uniform. It's often difficult to update. Even some of the more public resources are not updated regularly. So we've hired Deborah to put together, it'll initially be an online resource, but we hope to have print available at some point, too. And again, this is a first quarter 2023 launch, we're hoping. Next slide, please. We're doing a lot of regional outreach. We've held convenings in, this one is in Lawrence County. We partner with groups that are in those counties, so it's not us coming in. It's a partner agency convening stakeholders in that county. So the United Way of South Central Indiana was helpful in Lawrence County. In fact, I was just in Bedford this morning talking to a service provider there who runs a domestic violence shelter. Just trying to get a handle on what resources are needed, what's available, how we can support that. Because as you know, housing insecurity is a regional issue and the services that we provide here in Monroe County are often used by people in other counties because they don't have anything. So we're trying to develop some partnerships that could lead to providing services in those counties so that's not going to be a strain on our system. Next slide, please. This is just one from Owen County. We partnered with the Community Foundation there. And then, not pictured here, but we just had it last week, was a Green County convening. Lots of interesting information. They're in a very different place than we are and they see a lot of needs and a lot of challenges from their elected officials who don't necessarily want to recognize a problem or who would prefer for that problem to go to Monroe County or some other county. So there's a lot of work to do there. Next slide, please. We convene weekly shelter check-ins. This was something that was started by, during COVID, it used to be convened by Beverly Callender Anderson of the city. And so all the shelter providers and folks from the city and the county, Angie's party is often there. Monroe County Health is there every week, IU Health and others. And we just really touch base. It's a short, usually a short meeting, talk about what's happening and if there's any response that's needed. And we'll continue to do that. Next slide, please. Thanks. The Housing and Eviction Prevention Program, it's a really important work for housing insecurity. But they're struggling a little bit to find resources for that. So we've agreed to pay for the staff's partial salary this year and then work with the Community Justice and Mediation Center to figure out some kind of long-term sustainable solution. We need to find funding sources that, so that they're not constantly just like going from grant to grant. So that's one thing that we're working on. And then there was a program, an eviction court watch program that Prosperity Indiana has modeled. I'm really interested in that. I don't think we necessarily need it for Monroe County, but the other counties are not as transparent. And it's really powerful just to know that somebody is watching the proceedings. It affects the outcome and the things that are said. And so we're going to look for volunteers, probably starting in Lawrence and Owen, and see if we can get some interest in doing that and really just like looking at the demographics and just what it says, watching the different proceedings. Okay, next slide, please. One of the challenges is that we have vouchers for people in our community, but we have a lot of landlords who are not interested in taking vouchers. So we're looking for programs that we can pilot to see if there is a way that we can incentivize landlords to take people who have vouchers. So this is something we've applied to the IU Health Community Impact Investment Grant for 1.5 million. We don't yet know if we're getting it. And if we don't get that grant, it will try to launch it on a smaller scale. But the idea is that we have a pool of funds available for landlords to renovate units that they might not be able to put on the market because they're subpar or maybe they're, you know, for whatever reason, unavailable. And in exchange for those funds, they would have to agree to a long-term lease for a tenant who had a voucher, probably with an agency, so they would have wraparound services as well. So that's one thing that I think holds a lot of potential. Next slide, please. And the other one that's kind of similar is Landlord Risk Mitigation Fund, which I'm sure you've heard about. It's something that the Bloomington Housing Authority is launching. I'm on their board. I'm really excited about that. And they only have funds that can be used within the city. So we can provide some funds for that program to expand it into the rest of the county. So that's, and that's all you. That's county funds, ARPA funds. Next slide, please. This is a program that we're still trying to get off the ground, haven't made much progress yet. But it's a Prosperity Indiana program that some other communities are doing, Community Loan Center. It's really an alternative to predatory lending and it's an employer-based system. So the employer signs on and all of its employees have access to low interest, well, lower interest, small-ish, probably under $2,000 loans for any purpose. So they go to a portal, they go to a website, they, you know, type in the need, it gets deducted from their paycheck. And it's usually like a year or two payback period and it's something for emergencies. So if your car breaks down or if you have a kid that has a dental emergency, something like that. We've talked with CDFI Friendly Bloomington as a possible financial partner, but we haven't quite nailed that down yet. So we're looking for a financial institution to partner with. Next slide, please. We've launched a bunch of communications. We have a website that's still under development, but the landing page is there. We have a monthly newsletter that's really not just highlighting our work, but every agency that's doing work in the homeless response system. We feel like it's important to raise the awareness in the community about the work that's already being done. Because so many times I hear, oh, nothing's happening, nothing's being done. And you just have to, like, when you work in the field and you're hearing about what's being done every day, it's kind of hard to take. So we also have Instagram and Facebook and we'll be looking for other ways that we can communicate that. Guest editorials and the HT, you know, radio spots, that kind of thing. And then just as a wrap-up, I want to mention, next slide, please. And then the next. Some IU partnerships. I thought it was a good segue from the previous presentation. There's so many resources at IU. We're trying to take advantage of that. We're working with the Grant Writing Course that Laura Littlepage is teaching to look for potential funding sources, working with Mark Levin's MPA Local Economic Development Project and on trying to get some research done for landlord incentives and what other communities are doing. Next slide, please. We're really excited about working with Isak Naterasari, who you know, I'm sure. He is a data guru and he has a team of staff, actually, who are piloting a project of data support with a community member and we're kind of their pilot project. And they're helping us with some of the Built for Zero data challenges. It's really, it's a fantastic thing and they're at the minimum going to provide some training, but they're also going to work with us on strategy and kind of big-picture stuff going forward. And then in the spring semester, we're going to be the part, community partner with the Kelly Institute for Social Impact Case Competition. And if you're familiar with that, we'll present a problem or a challenge to the students. They'll break into teams. The winning team will result in us getting $10,000 to implement their solution. So that's pretty fun. And then, next slide, please. We have a couple of interns, the Cox Scholar Intern Shay Berry, who's going to come tonight. And I said, you know, I'm not really sure when we're going to. Sends her regrets. But that program is for a four-year commitment, so we're going to have her for four years, which I think is just fantastic. It's, and she's really enthusiastic. And as a minor in nonprofit management, we're really hoping to give her some opportunities for growth there, too. And then Lizzie Wright is a media school student, junior through the Bloomington Press Club internship. And that, my friends, is it. I'm happy to answer any questions. I so appreciate the fact that you have committed to supporting this endeavor. And I really look forward to partnering with you in any way we can in the future.
Thank you for being here. And the sheer number of different programs that you just talked about, I just feel like we made the best investment ever, you know? I mean, I don't know. I'm really impressed, but I, sorry, I'm out of turn because normally, my colleagues like to comment.
I have a question.
Sure.
So you talk about being data-driven pretty much throughout the presentation. I remember during the Heading Home project, there was one issue that came up several times was the incompatible HMIS that different shelter providers used. And I'm wondering, is that an issue that you're grappling with?
It's a huge issue.
Progress?
It's a huge issue. So we have several large, well, one in particular, large shelter provider that doesn't, isn't in HMIS, doesn't receive federal funding. And so there's not that incentive to do it. And so we're trying to figure out workarounds. I mean, it's not unique to other, you know, we're not unique. Other communities have the same issue. We might end up having to do some kind of parallel database. But then you, we're struggling with like security and confidentiality questions and then also compatibility questions and especially for like the domestic violence database. That's a, that's a big confidentiality issue. So it's, yeah, it's a challenge.
Any other comments?
I, thank you very much. This was awesome and in your grace and waiting as late as you have this evening shows that you're the right person in this job. I appreciated your comments about other communities and regional approaches. And that's kind of always on my mind a little bit. I mean, we've made a lot of choices in this community to do the right thing, do necessary things. I would love to hear you speak more about interest in other communities about creating not-for-profits to support homelessness, houselessness. What's your gauge on what the region, how the region is responding to an issue that clearly is affecting every one of us?
I think every county is in a different place. I was just in Green County and I was really struck, as I said, by the lack of support from elected officials. And I think that that's in more rural communities, that's a big challenge. But the service providers, the people who are running the food pantries and doing church outreach and those kinds of, they see people living in cars. They see, you know, the in-laws that live in the shed behind the, you know, they see all that. And they're frustrated because they don't have the resources. So I think that our challenge is going to be to find ways we can partner to look for resources. And maybe that's providing guidance for grant funding. Maybe it's accessing the Built for Zero resources. Because one thing I didn't mention is that one of our incentives for joining Built for Zero is that they got $100 million MacArthur Foundation grant that they're granting out to their member communities. And so I was just last week talking with one of the people that run their foundation and they're, you identify a problem and you make a, basically you make a pitch and they work with you and you can fund someone for a two-year period to sort of proof of concept. So I think that kind of thing might be really valuable if we could have somebody who would just be dedicated specifically to regional outreach and to developing the sort of resources in those regions. I also think that there's a lot of potential in the community land trust that's being developed. That is something I didn't mention here, but the VHA's subsidiary, the Somon Hill Development Corp. We just had a presentation last week with somebody from Vermont who runs a multi-county community land trust where some of these blighted properties get redeveloped with support from, you know, you don't have that land cost and you have some other resources. So that's really potential for, great potential for county like Green or Lawrence or Owen.
Thank you for staying so late. And I actually was able to watch our colleagues on the city side meeting last week in which you presented this. So, but I still learned something new tonight. Not telling on myself that I watched Cast TV. But I did have a quick question.
Sure.
Um, you have mentioned that you have an advisory council, especially with veteran homeless. Just out of curiosity, do you have anybody on these types of councils that are lived experiences? Do they, like, are they, like, folks that are experiencing homelessness on these councils as well?
Yeah, we have a lot of, we have a lot of work to do in that regard, too. We have one of the committees, the Cross Training Committee actually has a woman who has lived experience on that. But one of the things that we're being coached with for Built for Zero is that we can't just have, it can't be tokenism. We can't just have, okay, we have a person on this committee. And then the people with lived experience need to be integrated at all levels of decision-making and program development and policy. And so, I mean, I would say to you that we're not there. We recognize it and we're working towards that.
I appreciate you saying that because I think that's really important, especially with tokenism as well. Know that sometimes. But yeah, I think that's really important. So thank you.
Oh, my goodness. Councilperson.
Thank you for being here. First of all, I received an email from your organization today at three o'clock, so you're busy. Well done. That's quite amazing. Secondly, one of the reasons why I think it's so important that you're here is because we're really grappling with thinking about our carceral system and how does incarceration look? There's some really great data out there that shows when communities invest in housing, incarceration rates drop. Now, I mean, we could probably talk all night about why that is or, you know, all those things. But I think the work that you're doing is having side effects that. But I think the work that you're doing is having side effects that are improving the ways that we are going to be working in the future too. So, thank you.
Oh, I hope so.
Uh, my last, my, my question to you is one on economic development. Um, ROI does a lot of work on housing studies and they do a lot of webinars on housing. And obviously it's a different beast than what you're, you're working with, but do you ever collaborate with them?
Uh, yeah, um, I'm trying, now I'm trying to think of one example. I think I feel like I collaborate with them because I call Lisa Abbott all the time and say, and say, hey, I have a question. Um, we're, we're tightening, we're tightly connected with ROI through Tina, who, Tina Peterson, who is the co-chair of my advisory group and I meet with her and Afra Sefferman of the United Way.
Yes.
I am always talking or texting or, so, so we don't have a particular program that we're partnering on at this point, but they're a really valuable resource and I could imagine that we co, you know, do something in the future. I just don't have anything right at the moment.
Yeah, I, I don't think you need another program. But, but it's, it's good to hear that you're well connected.
Yeah, thank you.
Council Munson.
Thank you so much for, for staying late to present to us. And I just wondered, do you coordinate with food pantries at all to, um, identify needs in terms of, uh, housing?
Um, we don't directly, since we're not a direct service provider, but I know that the direct service providers are like that for emergency shelters are doing that. Um, it's a, it's a small community in that regard and, and so there is a lot of that informal connection. I really would like to see maybe more formalizing of that, but there is a lot of, yeah.
That's where my mind was going to, uh, because there, uh, the food pantries really are a base line, touch point for, for people in need.
Totally agree. I think that's also true at Indiana University. One of the things that we've found is that there's not a lot of data or information about, about housing insecurity at the university. And we know that the food pantry there sees over 700 students. Um, and any, I forget what the time period is, but it, that to me is a mark of, there's something more there. So we're, um, we're trying to figure out how we can get at that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I, I have a question for you, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
Um, assuming that these kind of updates are useful for you, would, what kind of, how, what kind of?
Do to get earlier on the agenda? Well, that's true. It's a fair question.
Um, what kind of regularity would you like to see? I mean, now, how often, would you, what's helpful for you? I think you're all on our newsletter list, um, but what would be?
I would say at least annually. And if you've got, um, a reason or something big to share, we would love to have you come anytime.
Okay.
Um, this time of year is just, it's, yeah.
It's pretty full, yeah.
Yeah.
So not October.
September or October.
February.
Okay. But, um, but yeah, we, we'll get you, like, talk to Michelle in our office and we'll, we'll get you, you know, if, if May is your favorite month and you want to lock in May, go for it.
Okay, all right, that's good, thanks.
So I'd just like to say that, uh, tonight, hearing both about the prosecutor study and about heading home and their progress is just the kind of thing that I think we need to do more as a council. And we'd like to hear from more, uh, programs in our county.
Yeah, it's really important, it's really important. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Being here and it's time for everyone to go home. So, um, I do have one more item. Approval of the minutes, folks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, I moved to approve the July 26, 2022 work session in August 9, 2022, regular session minutes as presented.
Uh, any questions, changes, modifications? Seeing none, not everyone is here, so we have to do a roll call vote, right? No voice vote? All right, all those in favor, all those in favor of approving the 20, July 26 and August 9 minutes as presented, say aye. Aye. Call opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Are there any council comments? We'll throw this at you. No. I am kidding. Any comments? No, all right.
I know. It's going on 10 o'clock, man.
I, it is amazing. Yeah, that's funny. All right, um, I now adjourn our meeting, so, uh, good night, everybody.